At this time, I'll reconvene the La Quinta City Council meeting for October Tuesday, October 7th, 2014. At this time, I'd ask that you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on an item which is on the agenda, I've asked that you please fill out a request to speak form. It's a form like this, it's in the back of the room, and give it to our city clerk. Anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda can do so. But I do have some requests to speak, so if you'd be so kind, when I call your name, come up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and if you can keep it to at least three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. First person is Valerie Ritchie.
Good afternoon. My name is Valerie Ritchie. I live at 533-25 Avenida Bermudez. I am here to ask for your consideration. Can you hear me now?
They're saying no.
Thank you. I am here to ask for your consideration for a solution to traffic control on Avenida Bermudez. Our traffic has increased two-fold since the turnaround was added to Eisenhower. The noise, we cannot even get out of our driveway any longer. It is so unsafe. So I need some kind of solution, either speed, a new speed, 25 to 30 miles an hour. We are residential. Forty is too fast. They're traveling 70 miles an hour. At night, it's like a freeway. It's like an absolute freeway. Nobody even puts on their brakes. You can't walk on the side of the street that I live on. It is unsafe. So I'm just asking if there's any consideration for some kind of control on Avenida Bermudez.
You know, it's been, oh, a few years ago, when we dealt with the issue about speed on Bermudez, because we understand, and there are many of the driveways that you have to, when you back out, you can't see cars coming up the street. And it's a dangerous situation, and that, so as I recall, we reduced the speed on Bermudez, and then we did some road work, striping and that, that I think would help the situation. Tim, our Public Works Director, can probably answer this, but you're absolutely correct, and I think that, you know, if it's getting worse, and as we know, traffic is building up, and now we're coming into the season, you're going to get even more traffic, and that. Tim, can you answer this?
We reduced it from 45 to 40.
Yeah.
That's what we did.
That's correct. In 2011, they did a, we did a traffic survey after doing some striping improvements, basically, and reduced the width of the lanes on the outside, partially in response to being able to create a parking lane on the west side of the street so that people could pull in and out of their driveways easier. But that resulted in an average reduction of about five miles per hour to the speeds on Bermudez, and so that's the last time it was reposted.
It's good that people are coming to us and complaining that it may be a safety problem. What can we do to extend and make it a safer street for those citizens, especially those citizens that live on Bermudez?
It isn't a residential street, that's the first thing. But it has four lanes on it, and we looked at, I believe, at that same timeframe, some different striping options that could be considered. Striping amazingly does a, could job psychologically in having people feel that the street is narrower than it actually is, and so we could revisit that again if the city council would like, and then it's timely because we're looking also at, this year, we need to resurvey the city streets as we're required to do by state law in order to post the speed limits. The city, the audience may or may not be aware that state law actually requires that the speed laws be set after a speed survey is done and not just-
These are the warrants.
Well, that's, it's related to warrants, but basically what anti-speed trap laws require us to do is measure the speed every seven to 10 years, and then the 85th percentile or the, where most vehicles are traveling at or less is the posted speed limit out on all city streets.
I know that they do this periodically on Avenue 52, that you'll have a motorcyclist sitting there with a radar gun, and maybe this is another way of slowing people down, is periodically ask our Sheriff's Department to put a radar gun up on Bermudez and checking the speed limit of people coming up the street. It's a deterrent to a certain degree.
They do that periodically. But it has not helped, and they've even put the box out there for the speed limit, and it doesn't deter them for that one day, but it does not deter them at all.
No. Okay. We're looking for answers.
Well, I'm just trying to say that, you know, you've done so many things. We bought in 2011 and moved down here a year ago. We have twice the traffic that we had when we bought. When we walk on Eisenhower, there is no traffic any longer. We have inherited it since you put the turnaround in. So we have to have some shared street with, control with them. Maybe if you lowered it to 30 miles an hour, you put a stop sign on every intersection, perhaps that would stop this. But if you stand out on our road at night, these people do not slow down.
Mr. Mayor, if I remember correctly, Mr. Jonison has scheduled for October 17th an overall speed study. Perhaps we can put this as part of that conversation, since we typically don't try to solve-
Let us take a look at it, see what we can do to correct this situation, because we don't, we don't like the speed limits, and I know, you know, we have a, in the Cove area, we have the 25 mile an hour limit within the various streets, but of course, not on Bermudez or Eisenhower.
But we're residential, too. And we can't even have company without being, it being dangerous for them to get in their car, because people do not turn over to the left lane. They stay right in that lane next to our homes.
Give us, and Tim, the opportunity to take a look and see what we can do to legally to put something to slow this thing down. Stephanie Stinson?
I've been here longer than Val and her husband Dave.
Name and address for the record, please.
Stephanie Stinson, 533-15 Avenida Bermudez, La Quinta. I brought this to your attention before.
It's on tape, so that we can-
Okay. Okay, so this has been brought to your attention before, as you noted, as you noted, as the city engineer noted. However, nothing's been done. You lowered the speed limit from 45 to 40, which made the cars go from 60 to 55. Simple math, and that's what it is. We come in and out, we have electronic gates on our property, as do most of the people, or something coming in and out of their driveways on Avenida Bermudez. You put your blinker on a half a block out, you have people coming up behind you 50 miles an hour, and either they're on their horn. I've been tapped twice. Luckily, I wasn't rear-ended and had my car go right into my home. But they don't stop. They honk, they give you the finger, they don't move over to the other lane, to the outside lane, they stay on the inside lane. You re-striped for golf carts and parking, but people want to park in their driveways. We don't want to park on the street. It's dangerous. I have, the school bus is here, doing 50 miles an hour up Avenida Bermudez. Fifty. I've sat there, right there on that monitor that you have, and they pass right by, and it hits 50. Slow down. They don't, it's a school bus. It's got your kids on a school bus, doing 50 miles an hour up a residential street. It's got to stop. I want to be safe. I want when my grandkids come, I want them to be safe. I want my neighbors to be safe. I want you to make me safe where I live. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Horn?
My name is Bob Horn. I live at 73500 Red Circle, Palm Desert. I was here last time talking about our kids with disabilities, with autism, bipolar, and wheelchairs, and we have a beautiful facility we're trying to open at the Palm Desert Mall, and we've got a good lease on it, and we've got to do some refurbishing, but we need your help. I was, it was suggested by the council that we submit a grant request, which we did. It went to an ad hoc committee, and they turned us down on our request, and I'm asking you to maybe take a second, look at that and what we're doing. We're not just, it's not a casual-type program, it's a nonprofit, but we're helping to take these kids and change their lives. Some of them are ultra-shy, and if they can be dancers or playing instruments, playing a band, we're going to do all that. So that's basically it. Can you take another look at it and give us some help? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. And there's no city of residence, I'm now homeless, thanks to malfeasance. That's the subject of my, what I'm going to speak about, as well as, I trusted all of you saw the September 15th edition of The Desert Sun. There's, of course, Chuck Vasquez from Cathedral City and embezzlement. Of course, all the crime with regard to my car, stolen, fraudulent, fraudulent documents, at a certain hospital on Bob Hope Drive, which I can no longer name, thanks to, because of the lawsuit, thankfully because of the lawsuit. But I lived in Palm Springs, and so the article on the lower right-hand side of that same paper, I hope you all saw it, if not, please Google it, if you're just back in the desert for some reason, or if you don't know me, I'll say, I'll try. About choking up, my, I gotta try to say every time, my father was in the Navy, and my brother-in-law's a city, former City of Atlanta police officer, still will not speak to me. Okay. So I'm also very grateful to The Desert Sun for covering this, because as we all know, we live in this beautiful valley, full of small towns and cities, but it makes up one big city because of the crime. And of course, the paper covers police chases or robbers or whatnot, but they have been remiss to cover the crime and corruption of the Palm Springs Police Department, widely regarded to be the most corrupt police department in the desert, and their malfeasance came right over, since I lived there, to Cathedral City, which, you know, as I just said, with regard to my car, and I was later nearly murdered there, and that guy threatened to murder me, and he lives in, or did live, as I've stated to all of you before, but for the benefit of all of you in your suburb, I'm quite certain by now you've figured out where I'm talking about, that certain one of the names who is listed named just in the past few moments by more than one party with regard to a street, starts with a B. Anyway, he's still on the loose, thanks to Palm Springs and Cathedral City at this juncture. I can't discuss what happened on Bob Hope Drive, although I'm told that that's where the crime began. Now, the inside, the interior of this article states that that family, quote, is, with regard to this lawsuit, you know, against the city with regard to their business, they are now, quote, "They are struggling financially and rarely leave their home out of fear for their safety." Well, as I said, I'm now penniless and homeless, thanks to everyone's malfeasance. I'll say that much as far as the lawsuit is concerned. Quote, their attorney says, here we go, this is my problem with the city of Palm Springs, the city, the city manager, at the end of the day, I like David Reddy very much, but he is the boss, right? But namely, the city attorney, Doug Holland. Quote, their attorney for this lawsuit states, "They have also been harassed by Palm Springs police officers who have told them that they should drop their claims against the officers and stop pursuing the money that was seized from them. I have been robbed, fleeced, blind, along with my family."
Alan, you, three minutes is up. Would you please wind down?
I'm on the red. Okay, may I just say that Palm Springs City Attorney Doug Holland says, he dismisses the allegations, adding that he has no reason to believe that the police are harassing the Nichols. Well, that's a lie, so I'm asking city attorney Doug Holland to resign, as well as Police Chief Alberto Franz III. Everything that goes on in that city or doesn't affect you here in La Quinta, all the way over here and back again. Enough, is enough. Okay? So thank you for your time and allowing me to speak again. Some of it redundant, but thank God the paper's finally covered it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you.
John, you know, we're dealing with the flood on a study session. Did you want to talk then, or?
Well-
Did you want to bring it up now?
I'll bring it up now.
Okay.
Thank you. John Penya, 51405 Kauaiemi. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. I wrote a letter to staff and copied the city council regarding the flooding. I don't know if that issue is going to come up during that discussion, I can hold off, but I don't know if you're to discuss the options that I proposed regarding potential low-interest loans to the flood victims that we have here in the city of La Quinta. Frank is-
It not only is in the staff report, but it's part of the presentation.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll wait till then. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, John. That's all the requests that I have. Anyone else wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move on to confirmation of agenda. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions by staff?
The only thing that I would remind the council is that we did, at the last meeting, agree to a time certain of 4:30 to hold a study session discussion on the flood point. So that would be the only unusual thing in the agenda.
Okay. All right. By council members.
I would like to pull consent number 16 and move it to a business session item. I guess that would be, what, four? Five?
And you say you want that on the business?
Yes, please. Separate discussion vote.
Right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Oh, yeah, presentations.
Oh, excuse me, yeah. I'm trying to move along to get 4:30, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. We have the announcements, presentations, written communications. We have two items for this evening. The first one is the Desert Sands Educational Foundation Walk Education, November 4th. Bob?
Bob Wright, 44330 Camino Lavanda in La Quinta. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm here with the brains and the beauty behind the educational foundation, Teresa Cachrubes and Jan Diaz, and we're here to announce the second annual Hike for Education from the education, the Desert Sands Educational Foundation, and I want to correct the date. It is November 2nd, not the 4th. There's something else going on the 4th that week. But it's November 2nd, which is on a Sunday. So Teresa, Jan, you want to say a couple of words? She can explain what we're trying to accomplish on this hike, and I'm going to pass this out to you guys.
Hi, good afternoon. Thanks for having us. So as Bob mentioned, it's our second annual Hike for Education, and we are the educational foundation supporting the students of Desert Sands Unified School District, and our purpose is, our goal is to support technology in the classrooms. So we go out to Lake Kaweah, and we hike along the trails, and this year, we have three routes available, two being hikes along the trails, five-mile and 10-mile hikes, and then the third new route that's been added is a walk along the lake. So it's going to be a beautiful day, and we're, again, it's a fundraiser, we're wanting all the schools to get involved, students, families, community members, all ages and skill levels are welcome, not a route too difficult for anyone. And, yeah, you have the flyer in front of you, so we're having a raffle also, free t-shirt. This is what our t-shirts were, an example of last year, included in the registration. So just go to hikeforeducation.com for information.
This was, we had 300 people show up last year for the hike. It was very quickly planned, and we raised over $22,000 for technology in the classroom. We really feel we're going to have well over 1,000 people this year for the hike, which means we could raise anywhere from $40,000 to $50,000 for technology in the classroom. So it's a great event. We would like to invite each and every one of you to come out and take one of the routes. Jan mentioned there are three routes, and it's going to be a great event. So we're very proud to have it in the city of La Quinta, and we hope you can all attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of a proclamation in honor of Fire Prevention Week.
I saw yesterday we had a fire.
Did we?
Yeah, I saw smoke.
Where was it?
And that's unusual out there, isn't it?
I was happy.
Oh, you were there.
Too hot for a fire.
I saw that black smoke going up. It looked like it was at around Point Happy.
Oh, yeah. They did have a vegetation fire, some trees.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, but I'm not exactly sure what the location was.
Well, we didn't burn down a business or anything like that.
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Anyways, this is in honor of Fire Prevention Week, and that, and our fire chief is here to accept this and so, and accepting the proclamation on behalf of our battalion chief, Jody Gray. On October 5/11/2014 has been designated Fire Prevention Week, and this year's theme, "Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives. Test every month. Remind us all that the simple actions we take can keep us safe in our homes. I call upon the members of our community to heed the important safety message of Fire Prevention Week and to support the many safety activities and efforts of the city of La Quinta's fire and emergency services. On behalf of the city council, it is my privilege to present you with this proclamation and to thank you and the members of our fire and emergency crews for all they do to keep us safe." Thank you very much, Jody.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we still have five minutes, so we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar as amended.
Moved in second. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And I think we can start now. So we'll move on to the study session and the item.
The first item on the study session, and that's to discuss September 8, 2014 storm event and options for reducing future flood damage. May we still have, have a staff report, please, Tim?
Thank you, honorable mayor, city council members. This is a continuation of the discussion we started on September 16th regarding the flooding that we saw in La Quinta on September 8th. Just to review, we had anywhere, the water district actually estimated between a 200 to 1,000-year storm, depending on where you were in La Quinta. Further north, the storm was less than it was, closer to the mountainside, certainly. The damage is ongoing. We're counting somewhere around $15 million now in private property and city facilities that were damaged from the storm. We've got, the council asked me last time to come back with some conceptual plans, anyway, of what could be done to reduce the damage to the city facilities, as well as to the private property damage, or at least try to lessen it. And we've put together some very high-altitude estimates at this point on what we think will work, and there hasn't been a lot of feasibility in terms of, there's, anytime you're working underground with large diameter pipelines, which is what generally storm drain work is, there's, you know, utilities are a big factor. The city is very flat in the locations that we're experiencing these kind of problems, so grade becomes an issue. And then ultimately, you know, the thing that I get asked a lot is, why don't we just, you know, pipe it somewhere? Well, where do you pipe it to? It becomes a real challenge in these areas as well. So we're going to, we put together some preliminary numbers, and we'll run the, but they are, they are just preliminary, and so when we get to those points, we can certainly answer questions on them. So just to put this into perspective, what we saw in 2000, or, excuse me, last September in relation to other storms that we saw last year, it was basically a two-and-a-quarter-inch storm last year. We had well over that this year. Last year's storm was estimated to be about a 200-year event. You can see, it doesn't take that much more to get to 500 and more significant events. But looking back, you really had to go back to find a storm comparable, at least in our review of the data that was available. You had to go back to about 1976, where we had something similar, about three inches of rain in three hours. The Deep Canyon area is actually south of the Cove, so the damage wasn't nearly as significant because it was away from the homes, but it's still significant rainfall. In 1967, then going back even further, you saw two inches in La Quinta from another hurricane. So to just give you some perspective, talking about the city-
Questions? I'm sorry. In, when we first opened Silver Rock in 2005, was it 2005 or 2006, we had a major rainfall that, and then that one was again above the 100-year storm level?
It was not. And it was not, and I was looking for that when I went back to these, the data for La Quinta is taken out of San Diego, and their records didn't even show anything of significance in 2005. The golf course opened in March of that year. What we had was about two back-to-back five-to-10-year storms that accumulated water in that Cayote-Tampico system that I described last meeting. The problem was it wasn't, it hadn't been properly quantified by the engineers, and I'll include myself in that group, as to where it occurred, where it was deposited on Silver Rock, and it overwhelmed the local drainage on the golf course. But it was not, it wasn't anywhere nearer the type of event we saw last year or this year. So just so we understand the nomenclature of storms and how the city's storm drain systems are set up, the primary conveyance for water in the city is actually the street itself, and that is shown here in the blue area, and I'll try to pull a cursor over it, in that, in the street, the idea is- The golf course opened in March of that year. What we had was about two back-to-back five-to-ten-year storms that accumulated water in that Cae Tampico system that I described last meeting. The problem was it wasn't, it hadn't been properly quantified by the engineers, and I'll include myself in that group, as to where it occurred, where it was deposited on Silver Rock, and it overwhelmed the local drainage on the golf course. But it was not, it wasn't anywhere nearer the type of event we saw last year or this year. So just so we understand the nomenclature of storms and how the city's storm drain systems are set up, the primary conveyance for water in the city is actually the street itself. And that is shown here in the blue area, and I'll try to pull the cursor over it. In that, in the street, the idea is for a 10-year storm, which is, means it has about a 10% chance of happening in any given year, will stay inside of the curb line. A 100-year event, which is considered a 1% storm, would stay in the public right-of-way. And the significance of that is that on a street where you have an ideal condition, like what I've shown here, the house is actually sitting above the curb level and at least a foot in order to protect the pad so that you have even a bigger factor of safety between what the 100-year event would be, which would be up to the right-of-way or basically the parkway. Between that point and your home, you would have about a foot of clearance there, or freeboard, as they call it. This, by the way, is the same standard that all the cities in the Coachella Valley have adopted. And as far as I know, all the cities in Riverside County have adopted because it comes straight from their standards. And it also aligns itself with what FEMA requires in terms of requiring flood insurance or not. If you can demonstrate that your house pad is above the, a foot above the 100-year floodplain, then you are taken out of the floodplain and generally not required to have flood insurance in that instance. So that is how the city designs its storm drain systems. And the street is primarily the capacity for that. But we do have storm drains and some regional improvements that we'll talk about in a minute. But I just wanted to go over that so that when we are talking about what type of storm we're designing for, this is the storm. So what does that look like on the ground? So this is a picture of, I happen, I happen to be in Palm Desert at about the time that the storm hit on September 8th, driving eastbound on, this is Country Club heading towards Washington. And you can see that the storm water generally here, remember, we're pretty far away from the, you know, the center of the storm at this point, it's actually behind me into the south. But the storm is, the storm water is generally staying in the right-of-way. It's crested the curb, but it hasn't gone across the parkway where my cursor is, or even gotten close to going up against the wall. That would be what we would be designing for in an ideal situation is to keep all of the water in a 100-year event in that area so that it does not, it causes minimal damage to property and minimal damage to the city's street system. Getting closer though to where the storm occurred, and this is a little bit later in the morning, but this is Avenue 52. You can see that the storm was actually a little bit higher here because you can see that the ground was wetted further. I'm standing on the Silver Rock side of Avenue 52 between Citrino and Washington. And our workers are out there looking for the storm drain, the catch basin opening. We found the catch basin opening. The thing was taking as much water as it could and it takes it down a pipeline and deposits it on Silver Rock just as it's designed to do. But again, we're in a 500-year storm, not a 100-year storm. So that's why we've got more water than that catch basin and that system can handle. And that's why we have water backing up onto the street. Moving closer, or actually going, switching streets now and looking at Washington, this is a different, this is a different problem. Or a greater problem. This is looking north from basically the Lake La Quinta Drive towards the Church of Assisi. You can see in the foreground, the retention basin has been completely overwhelmed. Has spilled into, and that's what that green strip is, the green strip out there isn't a center median, by the way. That is the parkway that the water crested and came into the retention basin. Beyond that is the northbound three lanes for Washington. Looking the other direction, we see something similar in the southbound direction. This is, this is the low point in Washington and it accumulates water on both sides. At this point, even the St. Francis retention basin was completely full. We had to pump that to the south in order to clear that. But we don't have a solution right now for the northbound lanes. And so that's part of, one of my recommendations coming up. Looking now, now moving south again, this is looking west on Cae Tampico, back towards City Hall. I'm almost at Rondo. And that is just off, that's about, just a little bit past where this tree is, is Cae Rondo. That is where the water from the lower part of the cove, the village, and parts to the east of there, the Desert Club Estates area is draining towards that direction. And you can see how much water ended up in, again, a 500-year event. So getting now, finally getting close to City Hall, again, this is looking south now on Washington, across Tampico. We've got, it's looking in this direction anyway. It looks like it's staying mostly in the street right-of-way. Unfortunately, this water came down and went down the driveway and flooded the rear parking lot. But it's not as bad as the other end of Tampico where we saw water actually going up against the wall and causing the problems at the citrus and also in the Desert Club Estates area. And then finally, making my way up to Eisenhower, this is the entrance. And I believe we had a gentleman from the La Quinta Country Club Homeowners Association talking about the flooding that occurs here. Again, you can see that the water's gone well past the right-of-way and is into the entrance here. And then the worst location in terms of total depth, this is looking northbound on Eisenhower at Avenue 50. Completely overwhelmed the city storm drain system. You can barely recognize the intersection. The, just to the left of the page is the entrance into the Santa Rosa Community. And they're still cleaning up their guardhouse as of this afternoon after the damage that they incurred. The, so I focused on four areas that I think we need to take a look at if we want to be able to deal with certainly anything in excess of a 100-year storm and possibly some of these systems might even be compromised in lower storms. The first one is the Washington-St. Francis-Lake La Quinta area. That, we'll look at that one first. And basically, what I'm recommending that we look at, we have two existing basins on the west side of the street. And potentially a larger basin when the church does their future plans. I'm relatively confident we can make the southbound lanes work. It's the northbound lanes that I'm concerned about. So that retention basin that we were, that we were taking a look at is right here. And it has no way to do anything with the water that accumulates there other than to put it directly into a dry well. And we saw how well, you know, that didn't work in a larger event. So my proposal is via a storm drain is to collect the water that overflows from the basin, bringing it down to the south on Washington and then bringing it over into a, basically a settling basin before it went into Lake La Quinta. We're not talking about dumping water directly in there. But we would settle out the solids and control that. But that is the historic route of water on that side of Washington. And it's really the only lower place that we would be able to drain water to if we want to take care of these northbound lanes. The other piece that you'll see on the next slide is the.
Tim?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt again.
Sure.
In regards to then, the water flowing over to potentially Lake La Quinta, didn't Lake La Quinta overflow anyway on the Calio Bay?
No, that's not actually what occurs. At least what I've observed is that you have a, because of all the undeveloped land over here, plus you have relatively small catch basins in, on Calio Bay. We, the system tends to back up and combined with the runoff from the vacant lots on both the north and south parts of Calio Bay is where I think the mud is coming from. But the Lake La Quinta itself, I think has, it wasn't the source of the floodwaters there.
Someone had mentioned it to me.
Maybe Councilmember Evans.
It filled up significantly and went above the docks at the homes. But that wasn't what flooded our streets and/or Calio. So to put more into that, I mean, yeah, we had some severe damage up along Calio where it goes in by the chateau. The chateau was under construction, so that mud component happened there because they had just torn everything down. And then along the gated entrances, but it wasn't due to the lake overflow. It did, probably helped a little bit. There's just a lot along.
The other part of the Washington street improvements that are part of the cost estimate that I provided was to come into this area, there are two catch basins just south of Avenue 50 that feed an existing 18-inch line that basically comes over to the north side of Avenue 50 and then makes this long trek into the evacuation channel. It's a very flat pipe, low capacity. But that's our only way of draining the intersection as it stands right now. What I would propose we do is that we have, we create a retention basin in this area that I'm circling in order to take not nuisance water, but the kind of, you know, storms in, similar to what we had last week or, you know, certainly in excess of a 10- or 15-year storm, we would store them on this property to keep the intersection clear for, again, for emergency vehicles and that sort of thing. The other, the thing that we were talking about at the end of the last discussion on the flooding was the fact that the evacuation channel, which basically runs from the Dunes Course or the Oleander Reservoir behind the La Quinta Resort, all the way out to the Whitewater Channel is extremely flat. And the only way that we could clear this area was to basically lay pipes across the low-water crossing, create a dam on this side to hopefully get water to go head north so that we could dry out the lower cove. That poses a challenge when you, when we have to close the road, first during the storm because it was flooded. And then after that, we've got a low-water crossing in the way, impeding our water from getting downstream. So I would recommend that we look at a bridge at Avenue 50 in this location to alleviate both of those problems. So that's also part of our cost estimate. The, now looking at the Eisenhower system. This, the Eisenhower Drive basically has a high point somewhere between the two entrances to Laguna de la Paz where the water starts heading back and pooling in this direction, or in this location, right in front of the entrance into La Quinta Country Club. The entrances to both Hidden Canyon and Legacy Villas are both impacted by the lack of drainage along Eisenhower in that the only thing that these areas drain to are retention basins. And the homeowners associations have the obligation of maintaining them. But in events like we saw on, in last September, the systems are completely overwhelmed. And so I'm advocating that if we're going to really make an improvement to drainage along this portion of Eisenhower, we're gonna need a storm drain. Not only do we need a storm drain, but we also need to have an area to deposit the water. There's only one vacant parcel out there, and that's between Legacy Villas and the hotel. In addition to that, I would recommend looking at catch basins around the perimeter, or around the entrance into La Quinta Country Club to help dry this intersection out. The other area that, on Eisenhower, that was really, has been a known problem is the intersection of Avenue 50 and Eisenhower where we have basically the intersection, the low point of two streets coming together. When this was originally built, what they did was they built a rather small storm drain, I believe it's a 24-inch, that takes water from a catch basin at the intersection, brings it to the south and deposits it into the lake that's in front of the 13th Green of the Dunes Course. Unfortunately, that lake elevation is within a foot of the elevation of the intersection itself. So that means that this pipe generally has water standing in it if the lake level is, you know, high at all. And so what are, what we have been doing the last couple of storms is trying to anticipate a storm, is draw down this lake as low as possible so that we have more capacity for the intersection. But it's really a, really a problem in any kind of large storm. And so in addition to increasing the pipe size that we have running to, running from the intersection, I would recommend that we also look at an equalizer line to take the water level down and keep it down to where, to where that, we don't have that situation where the level of the lake is so close to the elevation of the intersection. The, and then the last area that I looked at, based on some of the discussion that we heard or the people that came in and had damage to their property in the cove, I explained that basically the cove itself is protected by the Bear Creek Channel that was built by the Redevelopment Agency. I credited BOR, that was incorrect. It was the Redevelopment Agency who was the proponent for that project. $18 million worth of drainage improvements were built around the cove in the 80s. And basically what it does is it eliminates the flooding that used to come from the south. And it was, by all accounts, pretty devastating flooding that would go through the cove. Captures it in a dike and brings it around the west side of the cove and deposits it into the Oleander Reservoir, or better known as the Dunes Course. In addition, we have several large storm drains that come across and carry underground, take water via catch basins, that's what the green dots are, over to Avenida Bermudas. There's a reservoir inside of the Tradition and then a 60-inch pipe that flows out to the evacuation channel. The part of the system that is suspect is probably this system here along Cae, I call it the Cae Tampico system, that has different sections because of the flatness. Again, you're literally at the bathtub bottom when you're on Cae Tampico in that everything's draining there and there's really, it's really a flat route. But the only route to get it out of there at that point is to the east. And so underneath the, underneath the grass area now on Cae Tampico, that's been, that is no longer a street. And then underneath the street and sidewalk section of Tampico is a series of box channels, if you will, that basically allow the, keep the water contained underground and bring it down to the library and then in the south side of the street and then back down to La Fonda and then down La Fonda, down to this, what we call the Rondo Ditch, which is an open ditch that this pipe outfalls into. That system is, has, as I said, some hydraulic challenges because of the fact that we have pipes going to boxes, going to pipes. It's a, it's questionable whether or not there's some, there's some serious losses along the way. The only way to figure out where exactly you have the weak links in that kind of a system would be to do some hydraulic modeling to figure out exactly where you are creating the bottlenecks hydraulically in the system. So that would be, if we want to do upgrades before we spend however many millions I've identified here, we would need, we would need to model that and make sure that we're focusing at the right locations.
I have a question, Tim. You've indicated on several different occasions and at several different locations, how flat it is. Who was the engineer that created the system that was so flat? I was in the underground business. And that's not what you do. You create it with a slope.
Well, I would say it's Mother Nature because the grades are, in the pipes, reflect what the elevations are of the ground. We live in an area that is prehistoric ocean bottom. And so the, so literally the low point, I mean, there isn't anything lower to drain to. The evacuation channel has less than 10 feet of fall for its. The evacuation channel has less than 10 feet of fall for its entire length from the, the Dunes Golf Course out to the Whitewater Channel. So, so unless you're willing to start putting storm drains deeper and deeper to create that grade, there's no, there's no way to, to make a storm drain work in these, in these systems. And it gets extremely expensive putting large, larger and larger diameter pipes going, you know, further and further into the ground. Does that help?
Well, number one, I know it would cost more money to put it deeper.
Right.
Number two, I'm not too much, I'm not too sure how much deeper it would have to be just so it had a slope so that it could continue to run.
Right.
And number, was three, is that where I am? Number three, I still don't know why we didn't do it to begin with.
Well, the other, the other thing about even making the pipes deeper is you still have to figure out where, where the outfall is going to be. So if that's a half mile away and you're running at a, you know, 1% grade, you're way deep in the ground by the time you get to that, whatever that, that structure is out there.
That's why they have some pumps that suck them out.
And, and we do have some of those. The Rondo, the Rondo ditch actually pumps in, back into, from this location, when, when we collect all the water at the end of the line here, this is an open channel that is actually pumped across the street into the storm drain that comes down here and delivers the water to Silver Rock. The, the problem with pumps is that they're extremely expensive, again, to pump the quantity of water that we're talking about in a, in a flood like what we saw. They're expensive and then they don't get used that often. And so you're hoping that they work properly when, when they're needed. So pumping, pumping is definitely a solution, but it's, it's not one that doesn't have some of its challenges also.
And I want to be perfectly clear, you weren't here for a lot of this. So I'm not addressing this to you.
Appreciate that.
As the guilty party. And then I wasn't here for a lot of this, so I don't feel very guilty either. But I was here for a lot of, of other systems that we have put in and, and have also been here 27 years and it's, this is the first I've seen it this bad, so.
And, and I, I actually, to get historical perspective, I, I talked to Andy Vosler with, with Landmark and he gave me quite a bit of background on, on the system and what it was like before the RDA did the improvements to the, to the cove to protect it from flooding. I can tell you it would have been a lot different experience. We would have had, you know, significant damage in the cove without the improvements that the RDA put in. And, and so the fact that, you know, we still had damage, I don't, you know, I don't want to sound unsympathetic, but, but relative to the size of the storm, the system did the, did what it's supposed to do, which is bring the, the majority of the water either into the evacuation channel or into the Oleander Reservoir or out to Silver Rock. It's just that we have challenges in certain areas where, where we've relied on retention as the main means of, of holding water and just hoping that, you know, whatever size retention basin we build, that that's going to be adequate to take the, the size of storm Well, so, looking at, you know, I, I heard a lot of questions from homeowners and, and HOA representatives in the last three weeks, as you can imagine. I've visited, visited a number of homes and talked to a number of homeowners associations and tried to, you know, look at their individual situations. And I, I've come up with a list of things that I think that, that people can do that, especially if you're a homeowner that has one of those lots that unfortunately lies lower than the street level. I think these things are really critical in order to make sure that you're getting maximum drainage away from your home. I, I know that, you know, installing roof drains isn't something that has been done a lot out here because of the lack of rain, but that would certainly help. One of the biggest, probably the biggest impervious area on, on an individual's property is their roof. So if you can capture that water, direct it to where it should go away from your, your home, you're going to be a lot better off. And in addition to that, most homes, especially newer homes, are graded with swales away from the, away from the home. Again, to keep water away, a lot of people don't realize that and they, over the years, they get filled in, but it's important to look at your, your drainage around your, your house. Irrigation systems are another cause of, they unnecessarily take capacity away from our retention basins. We all know about the new CBWD water regulations and so we really shouldn't be seeing a lot of water running down driveways and that sort of thing. But that's another thing that can help prevent flooding is, is to maintain your irrigation systems. And, and if you do have low lying buildings, you know, you know, sandbags and, and other things, keeping those on hand is probably a good idea to help, to help keep that out of doorways and so forth. HOAs, the number one thing I, I see out there is that, you know, after a big rain event like what we just had, all of the silt ends up in the retention basins, clogs the drywells that are at the bottom of those things and creates a slayer. This happens to be out at Silver Rock, but you get the idea with the, with the material that you typically see it crusts and then it caps the, the retention basin. So all of that percolation that we were hoping to get out of the retention basin is gone until the, this is cleaned out. And I know it's a big, big job to do that, but it really needs to be done after any kind of significant storm. And the drywells, they're underground, but they need to be looked at at least annually to make sure that they're functioning well as, also. So I will take a break there and turn it over to Chris.
Thanks, Tim. John Penya, La Quinta resident who's here in the audience, sent us a letter requesting the city look at the possibility of extending loans secured by property taxes. So since we see, received our request, we took a look at a few items. I guess the first thing to be aware of is that, we talked to County Office of, Office of Emergency Services this morning. They're still working with the State Office of Emergency Services regarding full blown rent. So what we understand from them is that they're still going through their process of determining the assistance for residents. But the item that's most viable is the SBA loan program. It was mentioned at the last study session, but should everything go well, and again, we're waiting for the determination, that ability would be extended to residents who were impacted, so both renters and property owners. What they offer is low interest loans for both personal property and to repair the actual residence. Two, the request in specific, we took a look at, we reached out to, to banks to see what financing mechanisms were out there. Most of the banks have the traditional financing mechanisms. We asked them, you know, what's this concept that could, that could we look at, looking at securing a loan against property taxes? They don't have anything readily set up at this point, but they express, express their willingness to work with us to explore that option. The other item that is currently in existence is the CV upgrade program that, that is run by the Coachella Valley Association of Governments and operated by Y-Green. Last year, the city council put that program into place here in La Quinta where property owners can receive low interest loans and they pay that back on their property taxes. So we, we talked to them about what that looked like. And while that program has a focus on energy efficiency and conservation, there are items like pool repairs, insulation, HVAC systems and several others that, provided that there's a nexus between what they're trying to repair or install, that this funding mechanism would be a good vehicle for, for that program. It happens to be coincidentally, they have a workshop scheduled on October 20th at 5:00 PM at the museum where they'll be also talking about the program in more detail. So we did, we did look at the program in detail and may want to say a bit more, but essentially we're still waiting the results of the SBA availability. The CV upgrade program is currently available and then should you want us to do so, we, we could explore bank loans or partnerships of local banks.
Okay. Question.
Well, that, that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've got videos even of intersections that, that I saw going around town and we can certainly talk about the options in more depth. But with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
For any questions.
Chris.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, in regards to those items that you talked about, I mean, this storm happened on September 8th and we're sitting here on October 7th. So at what point, I mean, for that resident where that water came into their home and they had a foot or two of water in their home, we're already a month past that point. I mean, they've had to make, you know, changes to remain a livable home. When do we expect to hear from the SBA?
So that's, that's been the challenge for them is when an incident like a fire happens, it's, it's easily quantifiable and then to demonstrate the declaration, but when it comes to things like flooding or water damage, it gets a lot more nuanced. What County OES is facing is that the regulations have changed for them as well. So where in the past, it was just, here's the damage, please give the submittal. They're now having to navigate, well, does a homeowner have insurance where people displaced? So there's a lot of other hoops and hurdles for them to go through. One of the successes is that in September, there is three storm events. And originally, the state was looking at each storm event on a case-by-case scenario, so separately. So looking at them independently would make it much harder to get any assistance. They were successful in having them packaged together to be looked at as one.
But again, when would we expect to hear back on what they're going to do?
On the SBA program, they gave us a one to two week timeframe where we'll hear back if that option's available.
One to two weeks, starting when?
Starting today. Because today, they were able to succeed that and got the determination from the state.
Okay.
You want to ask?
Tim, what direction are we going to go? What, what do you need from us? I think the, the bridge, we could probably get financial help through Sebag and, and areas like this, but what about the storm drains themselves?
Well, you know, it's, it's obviously, we would need to refine these estimates if, if that was what the council wanted us to do, was to look at these four, or three systems in the bridge that I, that I named. With, with more time, we could, we could probably identify less costly improvements that could be made on the system and maybe talk about them during the CIP. There's some things that we, we observed that we could probably fix without even doing a capital project and we, and we've already started doing some of those things. So, you know, it's really up to the city council as to, you know, what, you know, what magnitude of storm or do we want to deal with or do we want to, you know, you know, isolate one or two of these projects and, and try to, and try to fix them? So that's the kind of direction I was looking for from the council.
Well, we were hit hard and so now what do we do? Are we going to try and correct it so that we won't be hit hard again?
Well, number one, I don't think we can do that if the rains or Mother Nature decides to hit us hard, because she's going to hit us hard. I, I think what we really do need to do is understand where we are and how we're going to get out of where we are. And where we are is looking at substantial improvements that are going to cost somewhere around.
Thirty-three.
Well, 33, less 13 if we can get the 13 from the feds. So 20 million dollars. We certainly do not have 20 million dollars. We have a reserve that has that much in it, but that is, that, that would just about swallow the silt, city. So, so we, then, then before we even get there, we do need to decide, do we want to re-engineer the system that we have and take it from a 100-year system to a, two or three or four or 500 year, and the 20 million would take it to a what?
Well, the 20 million would reduce the amount of damage that we saw in this storm, which was roughly a 500-year event for most of the areas that we were looking in. It, it wouldn't take care of like Silver Rock where you had a thousand-year storm up against a mountainside and, you know, that, that was, it's really hard to prevent, you know, runoff from damaging the golf course in that situation. But what, what I'm suggesting is somewhere in that, in that 20 million dollars, we would be able to keep the citrus dry next time. They sit in the low area. They've got challenges because they're at the end of the line of the, of the Rondo Channel and Tampico Systems. We could probably help the lower cove in the ends of those cul-de-sacs where we had, where we had some flooding coming into the first couple or three houses that came up the street. And then, you know, Tampico itself, there, there's considerable damage to the medians and everything else that occurs every time we have any kind of rainfall there. So I, I would prioritize though, that even though that there was property damage along that system, really the part to me that is from a life safety standpoint and is the circulation that we're losing by not having Washington open in a bit larger event, by not having the Santa Rosa Cove entrance at 50th and Eisenhower open. Right, right now as it stood, you couldn't get to the La Quinta Resort because it was cut off from the north because of all the flooding from lack of retention on the northwest or the east-west portion of Eisenhower. And then Avenue 50 being flooded at Eisenhower, there was, there was no way to get to the La Quinta Resort. I think we got to fix those kind of things.
Yeah, and I, I would agree and it's, it's ironic because Governor Brown just did sign a piece of legislation that would create, and I hesitate to use the terms, but it would create somewhat of a baby RDA, but for infrastructure work only. And I think it's worth looking into that and in, in regards to one project at a time, not just to create the agency as an ongoing agency, but wait until you had a, an infrastructure project in your, your city and town. Because my understanding of the way it works is that you need to have three other agencies that will sign onboard to be a part of it and you have to, and they would be part of the panel that would oversee the, the funding, if you will, and then two members of the community. But if, if the program or the project in and of itself was the project, then there's really no decisions about, do we spend the money over here, over here, over there? You spend it on the project. You get the project completed, you close that particular item and then you reopen it if you have another infrastructure project that you'd want to look at. I think that there is a possibility of being able to get funding in that manner and I definitely agree with prioritizing the items that you brought up. I think those are the ones that are most important to, to get fixed and get, keep that water flowing, if you will. That's what we need to do. So I thank you for your report and again, you weren't here, but you're here now, so from here on out, it's your baby.
Well, I think at a minimum, we direct staff to start pursuing the grant process for the bridge at 50. I mean, that, if, if we've only got a 10% that we may be responsible for there, that's a reallocation of CIP money, perhaps reallocating some of the payment management program or something else that we have that's out there if, if that can come along sooner rather than later. Because that's still with 10 or 12 million dollars, if 90% of it can be covered like the other bridge projects. Get it done, that way it, it at least provides that access that we need in that area. And then I agree, we've got to prioritize and really start looking at, how much will it cost in each of these sections to study what the best option to remedy is? Because I know that's, that's going to cost us as well, just figuring out, you've provided the problem areas and then looking at really what the best solution is, like when you talked about the pumps. A revamp, that's going to be a lot more costly. But I, I mean, I think we need to prioritize which areas, as he mentioned, are the worst and start, start looking at budgeting and then definitely pursuing the grant to start something on, on the bridge at 50.
Would that be the consensus of the council?
I was going to ask you about prioritizing, how that would work out. I guess safety is my major concern and especially looking at some of these pictures that you have, that one, you just flashed by. I mean, that's just, that's heart wrenching.
Right.
So those, pinpointing those areas, and I think Linda has a really good idea about just seeing how much each one costs, but it would, in my opinion, it would be up to you to really prioritize these and again, with the emphasis on safety.
And, yeah, I mean, it's going to, we're going to require studies to, to really look at that.
at the engineering aspects and just look at the cost of that component. We're on the court.
Are we losing control?
What I, what I was going to point out, and I, and I did this...
What is going on? Okay.
We'll get back to the direction that we need to give to staff, and those are good ideas, and I think that's the direction we should be going.
You got the floor.
I'm good. You have it now.
Thank you. One of my concerns, I mean, in, in looking at historical data, has the timeframe of these storms, has it been more looking at the monsoon timeframe of, of August, September? Has that been the major time of year?
From, from my brief review of the NOAA data that I could find for this area, that seems to be, you know, the hurricane season seems to affect us more than I even realized. Coming up from Baja and over even from Hawaii, they've had different storms come through. But it's usually late summer, early fall, even though the winter is technically wetter. Overall, the bigger storms seem to hit, you know, September, August timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, I've, you know, been in the desert for fifty-some odd years. I don't always have, anyway. And it, it seems to be, I mean, the major rainfall like this, when it comes so much in such a short period of time, seems to be with the monsoon. We'll have rains in the winter, but it seems to be much lighter over a longer period. And, and I say that in the sense that, I mean, maybe we need to get a, a group out of, like Phoenix. I mean, Phoenix deals with these monsoons every single year, and there's got to be, nothing against our own engineering group, but to have engineering groups out of that Phoenix area, where that's all they do, is look at drains when you have that much in that short period of time. But in regards to priority, I, I agree on the Avenue 50 Bridge. I think that's going to be, I mean, that evacuation channel seems to be at the end of the day, a key to the cove area, where there'd be the Rondo that goes more towards Silver Rock, but that evacuation channel seems to be kind of a, a main vein, so to speak, on drainage.
It doesn't evacuate.
And that's it, it doesn't evacuate. And, and I know, you know, also remember Stan Sniff mentioned years ago, that's a pretty flat drain, so. And if Avenue 50 gives us that ability to work more with that channel, I, I think Avenue 50 is pretty good, and plus we get some funding to help do that. I mean, obviously, with what the governor did in taking away our RDA and taking away our ability to deal with these issues, I mean, that's what we're worried about from the very beginning. And it's, it's a shame what the governor did to cities like ours, and not including the theft of 40 million, but this is what the RDA was supposed to do.
Absolutely.
Was to be able to give us the funding to make these improvements. And, and whether his new one will work or not is doubtful in my mind, because, you know, anyway. Timing wise, but...
It's going to work, right?
Yeah.
I guess the other question...
But I think Avenue, the bridge is bridge important, but also today, where the residents are today in this damage, I mean, the SBA, I mean, it's ridiculous bureaucracy they're going to put us through to deal with this. I mean, yeah, they, they can get in, what, a short-term loan two months after the incident when they've already come out, out of their pocket. So if we do have, Chris, if we do get this ability with the SBA, I'd like to be able to put it on our website to give everybody information on where and how to apply for that, so we don't tell them, just go to 1-800-SBA, wait for an hour, but to give them something real that they can talk to. I mean, I deal with too many federal state bureaucracies in my own job, and it's not a fun process by any stretch. So if we could at least get that information to the residents once we get that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, also, Tim, do we need to revisit any of the developments that we've recently approved? I mean, again, I'm looking at the Washington piece, and you said that St. Francis Church Storm Basin may be able to remedy itself with X, Y, Z. We've got 74 new homes going in just to the south of that. Is there something that we need to revisit, given what we saw occur, that they would be stranded, basically, if, if that happened again?
Well, they are also at the low point, they share the low point with St. Francis. They've, they've actually been gracious enough to allow us to pump to their site when we, when we've needed to. But they do have an entitled project and, and that's underway. I don't, I would have to ask the city attorney really to weigh in on whether or not we could go back and recondition larger drainage facilities on that, on a project like that.
Well, it depends on what the approval is, but generally, if it is entitled and they have rights that have vested, they will be able to develop pursuant to that. I'm not sure if you were thinking of additional measures that would be on that.
Again, looking at, did they meet the standard? Did they meet what we normally make as the regulation? And then now that we know what we know about that much water?
Well, here...
Do we, do we look at a revisit? I, you know, I'm not suggesting they make the change, but anytime, they haven't moved dirt yet, per se, and they haven't built the infrastructure, so is that an opportunity for us to collaborate with that developer to figure out more flow? Just, I'm just throwing it out.
And, and it is a, you know, really a policy decision for the city council of whether or not they want to go beyond a hundred-year flood standard. It's, it, you know, retention basins and underground retention basins, they all take, you know, they all cost money or take land, and, you know, typically developers are trying to squeeze every drop of water into those retention basins and, and it's, you know, so to ask them to enlarge them is usually means that they're going to lose developable lots in the process, and so that's, you know, that's where the rub is.
So, Mr. Mayor? I'm in. We, we did talk about the hydrology of that project that Linda's referring to, but I think our concern at that time was more flow off the mountain and all the that comes with that. So maybe when we're looking at this a little bit more in-depth, we can consider hydrology in terms of flooding that would come into, maybe in those spots that are really, really low. I don't think we, I don't think it would be fair by any stretch of the imagination to go back and rescind what we've said, these people are in the process. But we admittedly do have lower areas throughout La Quinta, and I think with future development, that should be definitely a concern.
And definitely, and also do, you know, another policy area for the council, though, is we have two undeveloped parcels that are in key locations in terms of adding retention capacity to Washington, the undeveloped parcel at 50th and Washington, and then the undeveloped parcel between Legacy Villas and the Resort. I mean, that, those are the only areas that I'm aware of right now, where those, where those streets can drain to. And it's probably, I, it's, it's going to be a greater obligation than they would have if they were only required to meet, you know, the, the drainage that comes from their property plus immediately adjacent to them. So we're going to be, so, so something that we would bring back to you would be exactly how much property we would need to, to, to make both of those sites work, and then, you know, then, then that negotiation would happen with the developer, but it would probably be at some sort of cost to the city in order to acquire drainage easement.
That property on the southeast corner is already low.
Well, that's why it works well for, that's a good location for retention.
But that property on the southeast corner is a very difficult property to develop.
Exactly.
So, I mean, it, you know, it's, it's ideal. I mean, sitting there saying, take me, take me.
It would be, wouldn't it?
Yeah, because it, every developer that's had their hands on that is just really been puzzled with the, I mean, we were looking at a tunnel under the street, getting across to the other one, and, yeah.
Something else to consider on that property, if we do a bridge there, the bridge abutments are going to encroach significantly on that property and the property to the north, so it's going to make it an even smaller development area on that, on that corner.
Okay.
Tim, it looks like one, one thing this thing has done is given you job security.
I don't know, I own the system now, Mayor, so have to watch out.
We, we do have some people that would like to speak on the subject, and John, you want to come back upstairs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and thanks to the staff as well. John Penya, 51405, KIWAIMEE. Thank you for the staff for taking up those suggestions, and getting back to what Lee said, it really is time of the essence for some of these people. I know as an affected property owner, our walls are still cut up two feet, you know, bare floors. Luckily, it was our rental house, and we had to move our tenant out, and we're working out of it, but it's out of pocket. It's, it's all out of, out of pocket for these people like us that didn't have insurance. And I know of a lot of people that are still suffering from that, living with bare floors, living with exposed walls. So any little thing like that would help if it could just pay for the cost of carpeting or flooring or something like that. I know the SBA process will be a long, long process. Any, any kind of federal or state programs like that usually are. That's why I thought maybe the city could get involved in a quicker manner. Maybe they could borrow the money under a low-interest loan as well, too, and loan it out to their residents as well, too. So just some thoughts on, on how we can get people back in their homes quickly, in a livable condition. It, it was just unfortunate that it happened. I know it was a five-hundred-year storm, but still, we did what we could, and hopefully we'll be able to fix some of those low-line areas. Maybe not a bridge on 50th, maybe a low-water crossing like we used to have, that wouldn't be as expensive or as expensive on, on, on those areas, because the water rarely flows in that area anyway, so.
John, he's had so much luck getting money for bridges, you know?
Yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah, we got dune palms and atoms, you know? He likes bridges, so.
He's in the bridge building.
Yeah.
But anyway, maybe that could move a little quicker as well, too. Again, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Good, thanks, John. Andy, Andy Wassler?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Over the last 14 months, we've seen a couple of occurrences of rain that were the things that Coachella Valley Water District and the county impressed upon us in order to be able to develop what we developed in La Quinta. And seeing one of the exhibits today caused me to think back and realize, when we built what's called Oleander Reservoir, which is where the mountain golf course and part of the Dunes Course is, it was to receive a specific amount of water. That basin has evacuated through a channel that doesn't perform real well, and then that channel has been further burdened by the pipes that Tim showed that go east-west all the way down through the cove. And I've got to believe that with the problem that Oleander Reservoir is causing by the slow evacuation of the water that's in it, it's still holding water, isn't it, Tim?
I think they moved the pumps out. It still has some water left in it.
Where I'm going with this, I think that, that a study ought to be done to see if there's a way to help evacuate Oleander, Oleander Reservoir quicker by improving the ability, a capability of pumping down the stormwater channel. And for that, Oleander Reservoir may be able to take some water during these rain events that would be pumped right back over into it, or there may be some opportunities like for the intersection at 50th and Eisenhower, there may be a way to bore back and let that water go back to the west. I know in the, the days that, that we operated and owned all of that, that lake on 13 that Tim's talking, talks about, it had a pipe back over to the lake on number one of the Dunes Golf Course. I have no clue if that pipe's still there or not, but I think there's an opportunity for, and this is kind of my last point, I believe that the city, CVWD, the county, C-VAG, everybody ought to come together and be looking to see what they can do with the problem that you all have here, because you've got a dual problem. Your major, big facilities are proven to be burdened because of the amount of development that's occurred, and, and what goes along with that is you've got a bunch of individuals, whether it's businesses or homeowners, that are greatly damaged because the systems aren't quite working. So I'd be glad to, to meet with, talk with, do anything I can to help. I can remember the nights that my father used to kind of kid about, we're going to see Lowell Weeks tomorrow, so we better tell him we got the boat out beside our house. And that was a joke between them in that we couldn't do anything till we built Oleander Reservoir. In 1976, when the big flood hit Palm Desert, Mr. Weeks called my dad the next morning at daylight and said, Ernie, I want to come get you, I want to show you something. So he drove my dad up to Palm Desert and said, these people thought they had flood control works, look at the mess they got. And that's why that you're not going to go forward in La Quinta until you do what needs to be done at Oleander Reservoir. I told him this the other day, and it kind of surprised him, but we went to talk to Lowell Weeks about building PGA West. He said, oh, I'm glad you came in to see me. He said, I need flood control at the top of the cove, and you can't build this project till you solve the problem at the top of the cove, because that's two miles apart. He said, yeah, water runs a long ways when it comes from a big canyon. And he explained the 16 miles of watershed up above the cove, and the reason that the levees at the top of the cove in La Quinta was to take the drainage burden off of PGA West, and that's what created the redevelopment agency, and that's where that money came from. So big players working together can do big things, and I'd like to encourage you all to, to realize that and work in that direction. And again, I'm available to help any way I can. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy.
I've never done this before, so please forgive me if I don't do it correctly. I'm living in La Quinta 33 years when my husband was...
We need your name and address so that they can be on the...
Oh, my name is Florine Fields, known as Flow Fields. My address is 48559 Via Amistad, and I live in Laguna de la Paz. But I'm living in La Quinta 33 years, and the first place I lived was PGA West. My husband, Richard, and I were the first members and the first homeowners of PGA West. I lived there for 24 years and never had a problem. Now I'm living in Laguna de la Paz, and I have a problem due to the flood. I want to know what my recourse is. I have a neighbor whose house is just a little higher than mine. So when the flood came, I got all of her rain, her mud and her dirt, and she doesn't seem to want to put down any retaining walls or help me out a little bit. I had, I have $85,000 worth of damage in my house, and I had walls knocked out, I had, my carpeting is gone in my bedroom. I've had a lot of, of problems, and I've tried to talk to this woman, and I just can't seem to get through, and I'm wondering what my recourse is. She keeps telling me it's the way the contractor build the houses. And I said to her, but you own the property now, you're the owner. So, and the homeowners, the HOA, won't do anything, they won't even get involved because it's behind her gates. It's what they consider her private property. So I'm wondering, what can I do to protect my house further from more damage, because this is the worst rains I've ever seen as long as I'm living here, and I know we're going to have more because of the way the weather's changing all over the world. So I'm just, I'm asking, what can I do here with, with someone who should be able to terrace her, her garden or do something to make it pleasing and still be constructive?
Well, I don't think we can answer for you right now, but we certainly have a city manager and a city attorney sitting here, and I, I don't know that they can answer your question off the top, but they will certainly take that into consideration, and we can get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Afternoon, the council and the members of the, I'm a new resident here. I lived here about a week, but I'm a retired attorney. I'm not a expert in water law, but the thing that crossed my mind here is that all this discussion of hundred-year floods, and you read the paper, there's a hundred-year flood every 10 years. It's like an oxymoron. Is it some kind of legalistic definition that applies to insurance? But if I were a member of the city council before I started repairing bridges and modifying roads, I want to know what the liability the city is, because I'm sure there's statutory case law out there that says that any property owner, anybody owns land like a road or this lady's neighbor alters the natural flow of water, you're going to have some liability for that. If it goes on somebody else's property, so who's responsible for... on somebody else's property, so who's responsible for all these things? What portion of the people have insurance? And it's like the houses that are rebuilt on the Gulf of Mexico every year after hurricane, people keep rebuilding in a hurricane zone. And if I were a member of the city council, I would say, "Well, where is all this money coming from?" Because even if a person has insurance, there's a thing called subrogation. If the insurance company pays off the claim for the property owner, they take over the cause of action that the homeowner owns against whoever's responsible, whether it's the city. And for example, if the city's sitting here and they know a road is going to be flooded every three, four years, do they have responsibility to do something about that, or if they don't, do they have liability? Is the city self-insured, or is it insured? Is there all kinds of insurance questions here that aren't being answered? Those are the things that cross my mind of sitting here just as, admittedly, as an attorney, but I'm just thinking about liabilities, hundreds of millions of dollars here throughout these flood zones that, as I say, these 100-year floods keep occurring every 10 years. So, is it time to change the definition of a 100-year flood, and what consequence does it have for a person's insurance policies and all that stuff? That's a lot of questions. You could have a whole seminar on that about what the liability is. The city, is the city responsible for building a road, changing the road so that it drains differently?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Wells Marvin, 78100 Main Street, La Quinta. I read Tim's report, which I got from the city today, and I think he did a very, very thorough job of laying out what happened and some of the possible fixes. But I want to pick up on a couple of points, one that Terry made and one that Lee made. Although I think the report is good, there really does seem to be a complete lack of outrage to what happened. I mean, it is completely unacceptable what happened, and how so many people were trapped either in the cove or around town. They couldn't move around town. And so, I think that there needs to be an independent investigation of what happened. Tim did, as I say, a very competent job, but I would suggest you get some independent engineers, like maybe Lee suggested, from outside, that are completely independent of the council and of the local community, maybe, who understand these things, to give you another opinion, if you will, like a doctor would, a second opinion. I suspect that 33 million is very low, and it could be 50 million, it could be 100 million, it could be 200 million that you need to spend to make the city safer. You'll probably never make it completely safe, but it's been neglected, badly neglected, while the city has found the money to build golf courses, to buy, you know, a lot of land, to build fancy, expanded civic center, new libraries, expanded senior center, et cetera, build lots of roads, lots of intersections. It's obviously neglected or underdesigned, the stormwater system and the stormwater evacuation system. So, I think it needs to be looked at, because I think it's right. It will happen again, whether this was the 100-year flood, the 700-year flood, something, there'll be another major rainstorm, whether it's next summer or whether it's 10 summers from now. So, and there's also some questions about maintenance of what is there, as Tim brought up. Maybe you need to TV all those pipes to make sure they're not constricted. So, I think there's, there needs to be urgency, and the city council really needs to lead on this issue and, you know, put aside some of the other, you know, whether it's statues, or roundabouts, or what have you, and concentrate on the, you know, the infrastructure of the city, and because it's something we don't see. It's not as pretty, it's not as fun as golf courses, but it's something that needs to be done.
Okay. Thanks, Wasson. Anyone else? Seeing, again, a direction of staff to follow up on many of the suggestions that have been made this evening, and that, Tim?
If I could go back to, if I could go back to how I laid it out in the report in terms of looking at, I think the, you know, the emergency access issue, I think, is paramount, and really, the project 1, 2, and 3 really are parts of, would address that. And I've given some pretty ballpark numbers on those, and if it's the direction of the council, I'd like to go back and take a look at what we would actually need to do, how much land we would have to actually get for a retention basin on Eisenhower and on Avenue 50 in order to keep those roads open and bring back another report or something along that, those lines of the council in advance of next year's CIP, when we would really be able to get some numbers together.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, Tim, if we were to have a group, engineering group, whatever, that really focuses on this type of issue, and what do you think that study would cost us before we did anything?
Well, you know, to put together an RP and bring in a consultant, I think we're looking at six figures to do something like this pretty easily, maybe even seven if we had to, depending on the scope of what they were looking at.
So, you're saying it'd be over $100,000 to have an engineering firm study this?
If you were going to have them look at these systems in the depth, and make, and not just these, I'm saying that's more like the, I focused on these three areas, but there's certainly a half dozen other areas that I know of that potentially could be a flood issue if the storm had been in a different part of the town. So, to look at all of those, I think that that's what we'd be looking at, 100 grand or more.
Because, I mean, I'd be concerned about mainly the cove. I mean, again, we don't want to have us locked up, and safety is a main issue. We've got to have, you know, people access to leave the cove in an emergency situation. So, I wouldn't want to hire someone to look at from Fred Waring all the way down to PGA West, per se, but to really focus in this cove area, south of 111.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and I appreciate everything that you're saying, because I live on the cove, and I probably would just stay right there instead of trying to get out. But while this was probably the worst this city has seen since those really, really early days, what you're suggesting to study the cove might be fine, but the next one might hit north, La Quinta, and bypass us. That's the kind of storm that came in. It's one that nobody could say, "This is where it's going to land, and this is where the water's going to be." We know enough about the cove system from what you dug up, and we've had extensive studies through the years, through other rain situations, where we've had this studied, and through the golf course, and go back and remember a lot of things that Stan used to say, and how many times we had studies done. We know what the problem is. And to go back now with another investigation and find out that Joe Blow is the problem, isn't going to help with the solution. I think we just need to, number one, get the application in for your bridge money. Number two, get the program that Chris came up with for the energy, and see how broad we can bring that on, because we've already signed up for it. We're already there. We might be able to get that thing moving right away to help some of these folks that need money now, and then prioritize the rest that are here. Look at Governor Brown's latest piece of legislation, see how that's going to work for it. Put the program together, and let's get it going.
Well, I agree. I mean, the bridge is going to need to be done, whichever way we look at it. But, and I appreciate what you're saying about North La Quinta, but I mean, all that, mainly 20 years or so, and they've got the whitewater channel that flows. And you're right, during this recent storm, we had, my office is right there next to it, and it was pretty bad for about an hour or two, but by 10 o'clock, everything had drained off and it was fine, not realizing how bad it was here in the cove with the amount that we got down here. And, but I mean, I would strongly be against $30 million without somebody else coming in that specializes in this area and looking at what can be done.
Well, I, if I may, I think you're both right. I think that Terry, I think you have it very well prioritized, but I think that has to come first before we do what you're suggesting. But I think you're both right. And if, after this, your suggestion, if it appears to be needed, then we can go to step two.
Well, Tim is going to go through this, and he's going to bring it back to us. And I think at this stage of the game, I think we need some more information coming back to us so that we can make the proper intelligent decision of how we're going to, again, prioritize how this work is going to be done, so we can clean the problem up.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the priority that I chose was based on emergency access, life safety-type issues, and so that's why I had the cove at the lower, at the fourth priority, just because, basically, they've got one area that we need to address, and that's the lower cove and those cul-de-sacs. Unfortunately, the situation in the rest of the cove is more of a local drainage problem in that as the assessment district streets were put in, you created, some houses were able to be, because they were built before the streets were built, you've got some houses that sit higher than the street and others that don't. That's not a problem that you're going to be able to fix with a regional type of drainage improvement. There really isn't a solution other than the homeowner, you know, basically doing some of the things that I talked about. So, that's why I didn't go really past, you know, the lower part of the cove and talk about the rest, because it is really protected generally from these larger storms. It's that lower cove that I think needs some attention.
Well, we know this, you know, how many soapbox derbies have we had from the top of the cove coming down? So, we know which way the water is flowing. And then the problem is at the lower end of the cove, not the upper end, other than individual homeowners having a problem.
And if it helps the council, we did do, we had more of a bigger look by SOMAS about 10 years ago at the overall system. They made some general suggestions about what could be improved, and this, and so I could bring that back if it helps, because then we could be using the engineering work that an outside firm had done as well in looking more globally at the system.
I think that's the way to go, Tim. We've had a lot of dialogue on that this evening and that, and so I think it's time to say, "Okay, put it back into your lap, and then you bring it back to us as to the direction we should all be going."
Okay. I'm cold.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? I'd like for us to go to study session number two, maybe take a short break, and then do that if we could.
Yes, you need a short break?
Just five minutes.
Right now.
Yes. But then go to study session two, and then do business. Okay, thank you.
At this time, we'll recess for about five minutes. Okay, at this time, I'll reconvene the city council meeting, and we'll move on to our business items this evening. We have a... Did you want to go to study two or go back? Because, yeah, if council wants to do that, but normally we go back. All right. We'll go back to our study session number two, and that's overview of Silver Rock Purchase Agreement, Business Terms with Meriwether and Robert Green Company. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last city council meeting, the developer, Meriwether Green Company, has provided an overview of the new development program at Silver Rock, including a walkthrough of the site plan and the various project components. As we laid out last time, the purpose of today is to focus on the business terms of the agreements with the developer, and they are here in attendance as well. From the discussions and negotiations last year, the guiding principles as a part of these discussions have been the goal to ensure long-term income generation to the city, maintain current levels of resident golf play, and create new recreational opportunities in our destination here in La Quinta. So, throughout the conversations, we believe we've made good on those guiding principles. As a quick recap of the development program, it includes infrastructure improvements, both wet and dry utilities at the site, the creation of a luxury and lifestyle hotel, a new conference center, resort retail, a branded residential, and upgrades to the Amundson Ranch House and a new golf clubhouse. John McMillan, to the left, is the city's economist, and he's been knee-deep in the negotiations and conversations with the developer. So, I'm going to turn it over to him, so he can walk through the business terms and some of the project financials.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, would like to focus your attention on the developer investment timeline above. Effectively, this is the schedule of the project coupled with the developer's investment as the project goes on over time. You can see, the first phase of the project starts with the pre-development work, then it gets into the master site infrastructure, and then the starting of the luxury hotel. In the right-hand column is their investment in millions of dollars over the course of this timeline. At the end, you'll notice that they have $361.5 million invested into this project over the construction and development of it. Some of the key business terms of this project revolve around, number one, being the location of the luxury hotel. The developer has found the ideal location for that luxury hotel, and we've been working together to figure out how that would work. Effectively, 11 of the 17 acres required for the luxury and the spa facility would be on the existing golf course, the existing Arnold Palmer Golf Course. Most of this area occurs on the 17th hole of the golf course, and there would be the need to relocate and reconfigure golf holes to accommodate the luxury and the spa for that location. So, what we've been doing is we would work together, both with Arnold Palmer Design Group, the developer's design group, and the city, to come up with a reconfiguration of, it looks like, up to three golf holes to maintain the current level of play, both from the standpoint of the experience out there and also the signature status of that golf course. And the early looks from Arnold Palmer, everything we've looked at, everybody's very confident that they can accomplish this. Moving on to the second key business term is really the financial side of it. This project has a feasibility gap in it. That feasibility is the, these two hotels producing enough income to satisfy the hotel investors in this market. The developer is looking to achieve an 11% return on their investment. Effectively, it's 11% return on their cost. And what we would be looking at doing here is to monitor their, the amount of TOT that we take in over time. And we would be looking at taking in, over the course of the project, we're going to be taking in annual TOTs that'll range from $2 million, $3 million, but we're going to set aside a portion of that to pay back to enable 11% return to the developer to satisfy the requirements of his investment, investor capital. With that said, there are safeguards that we have in place to monitor. We've got the ability to audit these financials. So, when we're looking at the financial returns, both on their net operating income, we can go in and we can monitor those returns, and we will be monitoring those returns to determine what and where we sit with regard to the 11% return on their investment or on their cost of the project. For years 1 through 10, the 11% return, 95% of the TOT that's paid in or self-generated by this project is available to fund this rebate. Years 11- Years 11 through 15, 75% of the TOT that is taken in by the city is eligible to fund this rebate until they achieve an 11% return. The moment they achieve an 11% return, that rebate stops, that rebate ceases. Anything in excess that has been taken in is kept by the city. Land sales for the project represent, there's about 145 acres that would be required to accommodate the development of this project. It's comprised of effectively 10 parcels, and the value of that real estate, because of the tax-exempt bonds that were used to purchase that property, is valued at $1 per parcel. And this value has to do with complying with the tax regulations that are subject to that original land purchase with tax-exempt bonds and preventing a private payment from a developer. So effectively, they're looking, the IRS is looking at, if you receive a private payment in excess of 10% of the bond issue, that will put you in jeopardy of violating that original bond issue, and it would make those bonds taxable. So irregardless of whatever developer were to develop this project, this land has to be sold at $1 per parcel. That is the value that's been determined that this, these lands can be sold for.
Can you define what a parcel is?
Currently, the parcels are the, have been mapped as the different project areas, and there's approximately 10 different project areas that the developer has identified. One project area would be the luxury and lifestyle for the luxury hotel. Another would be the luxury branded residential.
But you, you can't tell us how many acres a parcel is?
It varies depending on the project area.
So just the project itself will define what a parcel is?
Exactly.
Okay.
If I could, if I could. John, regarding the rebate?
Yes.
If you could expand that that only applies to the hotel rooms themselves, the 340 potential rooms, not any other?
Exactly.
Property being rented through the hotel, strictly only the?
It's 100% been generated from the hotel rooms, the TOT that was collected from those hotel rooms, and it's only applicable for the hotel in which it was collected from. So it can't be collected from the lifestyle hotel and used to fill a gap that's created in the luxury hotel.
And there's other properties, other, other buildings on the premises that will generate either what we call in lieu of TOT or TOT that is unrelated to the rebate.
Absolutely. And we'll get into the city returns based on some of the other project components, and I've got, there's some graphs and visuals there. We can talk about that in a minute. So those, for the most part, are the key business terms of this transaction. We do have the contractual safeguards in this project. We've got land being sold in phases, and the requirement for proof of financing from the developer before they take down a land phase, and to be able to have plans and permits ready for that land phase, they would have to complete project components, the MSI components of Phase One before they could move on to Phase Two land takedown. So there is, there is phases, there's milestones that they have to meet. That all is contained in the agreement. We've got the ability to audit their financials for determining cost, and we also, along the way, we are pre-approving their development budget, and we are pre-approving all of the budgets that they're working within that would eventually be the items that establish the cost and the return on cost. Additionally, the project must stay within the, the schedule. We have scheduled safeguards, timeline, that provide milestones that need to be completed by certain dates, and that's, that's throughout the agreement. And then the city also has the right, in the event that the developer were to default in any manner, to repurchase this project or any components of this project. And that repurchase then could be assigned to another developer for finishing the project gap. Additionally, the project has, and the developer is responsible for performance bonds, completion guarantees, and to have all the necessary insurance to provide safety nets for the Moving on to the city returns, we've got a pie chart here which shows the estimated returns coming back to the city versus the TOT rebate that would be paid to the developer over a 15-year time period of the term of the TOT agreement. Effectively, the hotel TOT is estimated to generate $26.5 million of TOT that would stay with the city, that would not be needed for the rebate to, to achieve the 11% return. We were looking at the resort residential components of the project, the branded residential components of the project, of which there's 375 units, and the resort branded units would have loss, and they would be more or less an extension of the hotel to provide rooms. Even though the hotel might be renting those rooms or renting those units, they would, that would not be subject to the TOT rebate that we were talking about with respect to the hotel. So any residential product that generates TOT on the site, all of that TOT would be collected by the city, and that's, over that timeframe is $12.2 million. We have sales tax revenues, the portion that would be, remain with the city, the 1% of the 8%, effectively over that time period through food and beverage sales, through the retail components of the project, through spa sales. That, that is looking to be about a $6 million income, revenues coming back to the city. The next item is the city fees of $5.2 million. Those are effectively DIF fees that the project developer pays when he is permitting components of this project. And that $5.2 million goes to fund parks, it goes to fund certain traffic infrastructure improvements. So those would be all fees that would be coming back to the city for future projects that we've listed here as fee income, and that's estimated at $5.2 million. And then finally, there's property tax coming back to the city of approximately $3 million over that timeframe. If I may, on the fee income, what we haven't included here is roughly $2 million or a little bit north of $2 million of building permit fees, and that's in addition to the $5.2. The reason we haven't included those in this presentation is that that is money coming in to pay for the building plan check, planning plan check, engineering plan check, costs associated with this project. So in some of our earlier discussions, we talked about, well, how are you going to get this through, given our staff reduction and the increase in development? And we were saying we would contract for those plan check services. That $2 million that we're not showing here would be the funding that we would use to pay for those contract services, or at least 88% of that.
We don't get 100%. Do I understand that?
Correct. We...
We get over 200%.
That's correct.
A lot of good red revenue, which is really black. Red on the chart.
We're getting, we're going to move on to the next chart, which is the revenue fee and rebate timeline. Effectively, you're looking at the timeline and the revenue that's generated over that timeline that would be coming back to the city, and that's the blue, the dark blue area at the bottom. And then the dark red area at the top, that is the estimated TOT rebate that would be going back to the developer. As you can see, in the first two years, this is really a 17-year timeline. What it is, is you're seeing the first two years when the project's starting out, these are the development impact fees coming into the city. And then, once the first hotel is online, the luxury hotel is online, that's when the rebate portion starts kicking in, and it continues on for the next 15 years. And effectively, over that timeframe, it's just showing you the, you know, effectively the, the red is kind of the tip of the iceberg here in the amount of revenues that are received. 21, or $20.1 million is the estimated TOT rebate over that timeframe, and $52.9 million are the estimated revenues that would come back to the city.
These are estimated figures?
Absolutely.
And that is if everything goes well.
That is absolutely correct, and, and to let you know, the occupancy numbers that were used to derive these estimates are very conservative occupancy numbers. They've been vetted by PKF Consulting, and they've looked at these occupancies and feel that both the occupancies, the room rates that have been utilized here are all within the market standards. And they've also commented on the developer's request for return on their costs. The developer is looking for an 11% return on costs to achieve their financing goals, and they've indicated to us that 11% to 13% is more of the market standard, and that they're at the low end of the market in that request.
So this isn't, these estimates aren't based on a perfect world. I mean, these take reality to it and understanding where the market is today.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are you, are you complete?
Well, I, I would...
Oh, okay.
That basically...
You're coming back to us to say, oh, you've got any questions? Okay. Well, council members?
I want to hear from the public.
Okay, you want to have a public comment? I've got some requests to speak.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Again, when I call your name, come up to the podium, try and keep it to three minutes if you possibly can, and give us your name and address for the record. First one, Robert Raddi, Robert.
Good evening, member of the city council. Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to speak in favor of this project a few times before. My name is Robert Raddi. I live at 54175 Avenida Herrera in La Quinta. So I wanted to speak out in favor of the project again. As I said before, Silver Rock is the central economic nervous system for the future of our city. I see an opportunity here, and I commend city staff, city council, and the Meriwether Group for coming to the table and looking at something in a totally different way. This is the new economy, turning a challenge into an opportunity so that the community can get involved in the short term, for short-term and long-term jobs. The project has the flexibility, the flexibility to respond to market conditions, to the announce of those items that we have to achieve in order to get the best out of this project. I invite the community and the stakeholder to look at this project in all its facets and understand that the group that is bringing this project forward wants to be part of the community, wants to be part of a solution. These are important times. These are unusual approaches that we are taking. But again, these are self-generated subsidy that needs to be part of the equation in an economy that is evolving, in an economy where global conditions would dictate what we're going to do from now on. So again, I would like to commend city staff, the city manager, city council, and the Meriwether Group for having taken this project all the way here to this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Robert. Pat?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Patrick Swarth out, 78705, Avenida La Torres in La Quinta, the only bed and breakfast in La Quinta.
What happened to Case?
Yeah, well, she has retired.
Oh, okay.
And I'm here in support of the project as well. I, I think that Robert had, had addressed it properly. I'm very impressed with what the city council has done and the negotiations that have gone on, and the fact that no matter what project comes before you, there's always seems to be protections in place as you go down the line. It's never just, here it is, and we'll see you later, and, and good luck. It's, you pass this test, then you got this test and the next test, and that, to me, really shows that you're, you're being conservative and we're moving forward. This is an important project because of the TOT alone. The state can mess with our sales tax, the state can mess with our property tax, but they cannot touch our TOT. And without that TOT, we're not going to get forward and, and be able to do some of the things we need to do here. Now, there is only one concern I have, and I've already expressed it to, to John, I don't know if he's expressed it onto the Meriwether Group, but I'm sure there's going to be two entrances there. One is going to be off of Avenue 50, and the other one's going to be off of Jefferson. And my concern is the way Jefferson looks now. Now, Linda and I sit on the fine food board, and I think that you ought to get rid of whoever's growing that brown stuff over there and get with either College of the Desert or one of the ag community bases, and get over there and start growing edible landscape. So as these people start driving across that road, they're looking at what the history of the Coachella Valley is. They're seeing artichokes and peppers and, you know, fruit trees and all different kinds of things, at the same time, leaving it available for maybe having a future golf course. Right now, a future golf course, or to build a golf course right now, would be crazy. And so I just think that it, it needs to be available for a future golf course, because I think everything's cyclical. I think that, you know, the rounds have been going down, but I think it's going to come back, and I think it's going to come back strong. I just think that we need to think about how that entrance looks. The entrance off of 50th is going to look just fine, but even, 52, excuse me. That's a long way to drive, isn't it? Especially in the floods, Tim. So I, I just think that, that, you know, that's the only concern I have. Otherwise, I think the plan looks great, and I wish you'd put the hotel over on 15, because I can't play 15. 15's a pain in the... 17's great, but 15's kind of a, and maybe you reconstruct that where I can play it.
It's going to get better.
Oh, good, thanks. Make that green a little bigger in the fairway.
Yeah, with the canal reconfiguration, it's changed.
Great. But I, I think that this is an ideal project. I think we need to move forward with it. I think the Meriwether Group is, is a fantastic group, and I commend the city council and staff for everything they've done to this point, and look forward to seeing it go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Kay?
Kay Wolf, 77227, Kai Insonada. And I'd like to digress just a little bit and talk about the Arts Festival. I didn't attend your meeting last time where the, with the overview of the, the project, but I did watch it on my computer, so thank you very much for putting all this on the computer where those of us who can't make it to some of the meetings can, can see it. And I'd like to talk particularly about the Arts Festival. The Arts Foundation does other events, events than the festival, but the festival is the one that has some possible implications in Silver Rock. The Arts Festival, as we all know, has been growing over the years, but it's also been shrinking. It's been growing in popularity and attendance, it's been growing in prestige. I think we were named number one in like three different publications or juries or whatever, growing in prestige and growing in sales. And this is largely due to the beautiful park setting that we have, the organization that the Arts Foundation brings for the artists and the public, the selective jury that brings the high-quality art and the many great volunteers to help make it a really wonderful experience for people to, who come, a particularly good experience for the artists. It's shrinking because the grounds are shrinking and the parking is shrinking. The grounds are shrinking because the expansion of the senior center has cut a big slice off of one end of the ground. of one end of the grounds. The parking is, I think, going to be intact for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen festival, but in jeopardy thereafter. And the assumption has always been that eventually, because everybody expects the festival to grow, the assumption would be that someday the festival would be out on the Silver Rock grounds somewhere. And we always talked about the northeast thirty-nine acres. And I noted from the presentation last week that there was nothing in the Merriweather plan that had to do with the festival. So, and I also noticed that that thirty-nine acres is still, the city's thirty-nine acres. If I'm not right, that's not going to be Merriweather's. And the reason that the festival continues to be important in La Quinta, it was envisioned way back when as a, to provide a balance between the sporting image of the city, which has been golf, and at one time tennis, very prominent, to balance the sporting image with culture, which would be art and music. And I think that is something that we need to consider yet today. I know that a prominent, well-respected art festival is a big selling point for real estate people, for the tourism industry, for volunteers, and it's a point of pride for all of us. If I were sitting on the board right now, I was on the board for twenty-some years, which was probably longer than I should have been, but if I were sitting on the board right now, I would be wondering what's the future of the Arts Festival in La Quinta? Is there going to be a place out at Silver Rock? Is there, is there going to be busing? Is there, what kind of a partnership can the city and the festival continue in order to facilitate what I'm assuming is going to be a transition to the loss of parking and the loss of some space into eventually a larger space? I remember talking to Terry once when I said, we need to have a park like the one where we have now, except bigger. And I says, and she said, what about the parcel at Silver Rock? And I said, but it's just desert. And she said, well, what do you think that park was before we made all those improvements? It was the desert. And so, you know, with the right amount of planning, which I know can happen, and the right amount of money, which hopefully will happen, it can be just as beautiful out there. And I'm hoping that if that's not what the council has in mind, they need to come clean, make a promise, or pull out of it with the Arts Foundation, because as I say, if I were a board member, I'd be worried right now, as, because they've got to look down the road three to five years to see what's going to happen. So I just want to keep that, for you to keep that in the back of your mind. Will it continue to be the La Quinta Arts Festival? Will it go away, or will it go somewhere else? So let's hope it stays here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Kay, first of all, John and his team have met with Christie, and I don't know if some of the board members were included in that, in very early phases about the potential of having artist community-type things at Silver Rock as well as the festival. Our staff meets with Christie and board members regularly and are consistently talking about thinking outside the box and how to look towards that future. And I guess I would, I would, I wish you were back on that board to go back and look at and be flexible to opportunities to make an even better arts festival than what we have on campus. Because the size is what it is, they're limited on the number of artists that can participate. That could change in this new destination, but, but that team has to start embracing the possibility of, of moving in that direction with us, and maybe you can help encourage them to do that, because we are totally on board. We made that a priority from our parking standpoint. Team has been in place talking about parking alternatives, even with the Old Town expansion, and we're a hundred percent in favor of the number one arts festival. We've got to work collectively to, you know, look at ways to change what is happening now and make it better going forward.
That's wonderful to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please, come on. We've already went through these.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm...
Give us your name and address.
I'm Jerry Lynch, seven nine nine zero two Barcelona Drive. However, I'm the manager at the Embassy Suites. And I have mixed emotions and hesitation on the project at Silver Rock. However, I do support it. The only thing that I ask is that you take into consideration the TOT rebates that were also offered to the Embassy Suites and to the Homewood, which, in which there was a five-year term and a cap. You did extend it because we didn't hit them, and it was only one million dollars. I think twenty million dollars is extremely excessive. I also think tying it to their ROI gives the developer an open checkbook and doesn't give us any control if they mismanage their business. So those are just things I'd like the council to take in consideration when, when penning their deal.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that, I'll turn it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add one other piece? We are rolling this forward in the study session today. We will not be bringing the agreements before the council for final consideration until November fourth. There's two reasons for that. One, we wanted the opportunity to present what we have here, so we can then unveil the agreements, which will be available this coming Monday, October thirteenth. In addition, we have to go through a process under state law where we have to do a notice in the paper, and a notice regarding the development agreement and that, which meant that the timeframe to have this public hearing couldn't occur until November fourth. So while we're presenting this today, we still have opportunities for the residents to look at what this is all about, and then the final activities occur in November.
Okay. Thanks, Frank.
John, could you go back to the bar graph? Just, just to recap, because again, I love the Silver Rock plan and everything that was described by John and his team at the last meeting. That's what really went over the site plan. If you haven't seen the site plan, just go to our website at the last city council meeting two weeks ago, under the Silver Rock Study Session item, and it's on page seven, if I recall, and it'll show you the layout, everything happening there, and layout and land for the second golf course, should it be required. We're generating revenue in years one and two of this before we're actually seeing TOT revenue because of the fees. And because of redevelopment, that land is the land, and it's the dollar purchased because of how it was purchased. But the rebate only happens when they're generating revenue for us, and that we're giving them a portion of that back, which has been standard in retail and/or hotels. And the magnitude of this destination is, is obviously much larger in its scope, and they're making a huge investment, three hundred sixty-one million dollars, and the city of La Quinta is not writing a check for this project. This is what we're, this is the benefit that we're receiving to help approve a destination inclusive of our community and attractive for outside residents, to help produce revenues for our future, so that we can continue to look at ways to pay for storm drains and infrastructure, because we don't have redevelopment to help up the ante. The last time we looked at this project, we were putting upwards to eighty million dollars of our redevelopment money to do the infrastructure, do the prep work of the utilities and all that. They're carrying that burden, because we can't. So, you know, we've got to look at perspective of how we're starting to see the revenue generated early on, and knowing at the end result, I think the projections are about six million dollars a year after the fifteen years on an annual basis. That represents right now our annual sales tax for the entire city. We're at eight million, six million, six million approximately between TOT, sales tax, and property tax, and that piece of property will produce what we're producing for the entire city. So this is, this is our future, and it's, it's very exciting. I just want to thank you gentlemen again for the work that you've done with our team to bring us something that I'm just so proud of, and I just can't wait to see happen. I'm ready for November.
Karen?
Get the public here.
I can't help, I can't help but ask a question that is, some people are probably going to groan. However, I'm getting a lot of inquiries as to why the hotel site has to be on hole seventeen. That, that we know for a fact that's where the flooding occurs, that's where all of the water's going to go every time we have one of these rainstorms. We, we also know for a fact that, that it has other problems at that location. So why and how can we, how can we have a public discussion on that right now? Let's have it.
I actually think Robert should address that question with regard to the seventeenth hole.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, Robert Green, three five five one Fortuna Ranch Road, Encinas, California. I think that's an excellent question, and it really goes to the heart of what we're trying to create here. When we brought, when we ourselves and the hotel operators that we've worked with in the industry in the past, and you've seen from our resume, the caliber of hotel operators those are, we took a very hard look at how to create unequivocally the best luxury hotel experience in the desert, perhaps that the desert will ever see. That location on the seventeenth hole is the place to do it, and we feel very, very strongly that that is the right thing to do for the project. Think of it as the anchor tenant, if you will, of the entire project. Putting a luxury hotel of the caliber of hotel that we've been talking about, operated by somebody like Four Seasons, Rich Carlton, Montage, et cetera, is going to set the standard and sort of set the whole stage for the entire character of the project. And we think this is, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city to realize that it will have probably forever the best quality hotel in the desert, and we feel really strongly that that's the place to do it.
Have you seen the video of the water that gathered in that spot during this last five-hundred-year flood?
Yes, I have. And, and obviously, the, the water feature that there, that's there is man-made, as are a lot of the water features that are on the property. So whatever's man-made, man can remake, and so that's what we have to do. And we've thought through that in terms of the hydrology analysis for the entire design. So...
Thank you.
No.
Okay. Lee?
Thank you. You know, I've been involved with the Silver Rock planning since two thousand and three, when I first got on this council, after the previous council purchased that property. And, you know, they've asked years, and just two, thirty minutes ago, why we bought that property. You know, this council doesn't just think about today, we have to think twenty to thirty years ahead, and that's why we bought that property, for the future of the city. And it has changed over the last ten years to where we're at today. And where we're at today, also, I'd like to say a few things. I think that Merriweather Group and John Gamblin and Mr. Green have brought quite a bit to the table, and with their experience and the design that they brought us. And one of the things I really appreciate is the openness between them and our staff, our team here, to kind of open the book, so to speak, on how we're going to put this together financially. It's been a heck of a channel, and it's just to make it work for everybody, but you guys have really been open about this whole thing from the very beginning. And I don't think anybody, anything has been over the top on any one direction. I think it's been a pretty fair negotiation, so to speak, as we've gone over this last year. The city has leave numerous hurdles, whether it be with the state of California, or the environment, or the needs of the developer, or the financial wherewithal for our own city and the future of that. And I think the teams have done a heck of a job, and I appreciate what you guys have brought, you know. And then the future, on where this is going, you know, it's right there on that map, on this graph, and this is why we've done it. This is why we have struggled at this council for the last ten years on Silver Rock, is to do this right here. And it may be a substantial more of a rebate than we've done with other hotels, and we can all appreciate that here, but what we're looking at from the Silver Rock development is not just Silver Rock. It includes the whole city. It includes Main Street. It includes our other hotels. It includes a whole city of what the Silver Rock's going to do for the city of La Quinta. It's not just the revenues, but also, all the businesses in our city are going to benefit when Silver Rock's completed. So we have negotiated this and talked about this. I don't have any questions for staff. I've asked countless questions already in the last year regarding whether it be the development itself or the agreement that we've talked about tonight. So I just appreciate what you guys have done, and I appreciate what the developers have done for us, and as has been stated, I look forward to continuing this project.
Christie?
Yes. I don't have any questions either, but just a couple of comments. What you're seeing here tonight is a culmination of hours and hours and hours of work by staff, by council, getting a consensus of what we, what we see financially for the future of our city. And I think that in, in looking at this and listening to the presentation from John and Chris, it's a lot to take in. So for those of you in the audience and your, we appreciate everything you say, but we have, we have studied this to death, and I'm so happy that we're not going to kick this can down the road. I think we, we have what it takes to move forward with this project, and I want to reemphasize something. We are not writing a check for, for any of this. All this infrastructure is being done by the developer. We don't have RDA anymore, so we can't afford to do that. We are so fortunate to have the Merriweather and Robert Green Group. I mean, it's, it's amazing, the work that they've done and the cooperation and communication with our staff. So I really, really look forward to this. Another thing I like about it, excuse me, and I wasn't sure that we could really achieve this, but it's going to be exclusive in some respects, but it's also very, very inclusive. And I think that's important, because we bought this with taxpayer money, and they should, everyone should have a, yeah, a benefit from it. So the other thing is, when the contract is actually, be Monday, when the contract can be viewed, or you can see it, wherever, I invite you to, to come and look at that. And again, I appreciate any feedback from anybody in the community, but, and again, I just want to say, this, this is hours and hours and hours of time, and it did get very complicated when the state got involved, I would say. So, but we're, we're going to move forward with it, I, I hope, and it's just going to be beautiful. You're going to be proud of what we've all been able to accomplish.
Good. I guess Terry and I are the original ones that got involved with this, I don't know how many years ago, when we knew, thinking ahead of time, what we needed to do to bring in revenue to the city in the future. We knew that somewhere down the line, things may not be as well as they were at that time and that. So that's when we decided to invest in hotel and golf course and that. The two main elements of what we were looking for was affordable golf for our citizens and revenue coming into the city and that. And what we're doing now is really come to fruition and that, and we're looking forward to getting this involved. I have two, kind of two issues that I dealt with. Let's talk the golf first. The design from day one was a second golf course on that property. Now, Merriweather has decided that they don't want to build a second golf course. The city was not going to build a golf course, it was up to the developer, and that was to provide golf for those tenants and the people that came in and stayed at the hotel, which was great. They decided not to. And my concern has always been that our residents, and we have over six thousand resident cards in, in there, and that's how much more than, a normal golf course is, is probably three to four hundred golfers that belong to the club. We've got over six thousand in that. And my concern was, are we going to take away the golf times for these people? That's what we built the golf course for. And that, and I've talked to staff, I've talked to the city manager about that, and they assure me that this is not going to happen, that our residents are going to have the first choice in that, and that we will make sure. If, if, if they can sign up five days in advance, and we have plenty of tee times, then that's great. The hotel guests can be in there, be happy to give them a little priority over, maybe somebody from Rancho La Mirage or something like that. But I think the key element is, I just want to protect our citizens that belong to Silver Rock Golf Course, and that they are, have the tee times and are able to play. I don't want, and it isn't that I don't want the revenue that would come from outside golfers and that, because they pay a lot more than our, our local residents, but the golf course was... golf course was built for our citizens, and, and that's what I want to protect. I'm getting from our staff that, that they will be protected, so I'm, I'm happy about that situation. As far as the hotel is concerned, I have to compliment Meriwether and Green. I, I think it's a beautiful design, I think it's the best design that we have seen over the many designs that we've seen. I like the low profile, we're not building, I know at one time we were going to build five or six stories and that, the single floor, floor plan and that, I think outstanding and that, and I, I really appreciate, and being an architect, I, I've seen what they plan on doing, and I think it's, it's going to be first-class. I guess my concern is now, we, we have three hotels in our city, and are, are we going to affect their economic situation and that? Are we going to take away from them to come over to Silver Rock and that we end up with something like the Rich Carlton and Rancho Mirage? You know, I can't answer that, I don't have a crystal ball that can answer that. I would hope that, that we have done our due diligence to say, even though we're building another 340 rooms, it, it is not going to totally affect them where they financially can go bankrupt and, and gone. We had a situation one time with one of them that was closed for a few days and that. So I was concerned about that, that, that we are protecting them as well as building something in addition. I don't know what the total demand is down the road for people to go in and rent these hotel rooms at a much higher price than maybe even La Quinta Resort Hotel. I don't know. I, I have no idea what they're planning on charging and that, hopefully, because, and I don't blame them for wanting to bring back and getting a return on their investment, because they have to do that, or they wouldn't be in business and that. But we also have to make sure that we're protecting our other businesses in the community, and, and if we can make sure that, that we're going to do whatever we can to maintain these other businesses, that we're not going to hurt them down the road, then, then I have no problem, but I am concerned that, that this is a, can be an issue, and I don't think any of us really know what effect it's going to have. We know that your return has to exceed, I think, what was it, 11% of the, of the income that should be getting in from that, and there's no guarantee on that, and it could be to the fact that we get absolutely no TOT out of hotels for some time, unless, you know, we've been able to bring people in. And you've got to bring people in, and these people want to have a, a good time. Golf is, is a major part of that good time that they have and the, and the activities that you're proposing to do at, at Silver Rock, and hopefully, this will get them in, they'll enjoy it, they'll come back, and that's the key, to be able to get them to have a good time and come back. And again, golf is part of it, so I, I don't want to curtail them from being able to use our golf course, but again, our citizens have first priority on that, that's what we built it for and that. I'm totally in favor of what is happening and that, the development. I, I would like to ask a question. Have you talked to, I, I know you're, you're talking about a river, River Walk and that type of thing, is CDWD, have you talked to them? They're going to allow water, additional water usage? You know, this drought situation has gotten to the point where everybody is concerned about it, and if we're building water features in there, are they in sync with us to be able to go ahead with something like this? I, I think what you're proposing, it, it would be great, I've been to the one in Texas and that, but I don't know.
Hi, Mayor Adolph, council members and staff, John Gamblin with Silver Rock Development Company. The, the canal concept, I, I think that at some point, the Public Works Director had sent a copy of our plan to the Water District some time back. We haven't had formal discussions with them. We understand that the, the great deal of sensitivity and focus on water. I think when you look at the canal, it's in aggregate, if you put all of the water together in the shape of a pond, it's a half acre of surface area in total. And it's also canal water, so it's drawing out of a lake that is part of the irrigation system for the golf course, that my understanding is the golf course is very close to operating 100% on canal water, which is the big focus in the valley to migrate golf courses toward. So we, we have an opportunity to design a very water-sensitive project, and believe me, as I'm, I'm hypersensitive about water, I have this belief that there should be tangible beneficial economic uses associated with the use of water out here. And to me, a large patch of grass that you never see a child kicking a ball on, or people enjoying themselves, that's, that's not a beneficial economic use, but the type of economic activity we can create with the River Walk, I think will foster some very great recreation opportunity and beneficial economic use. But I would look forward to discussions with the district, and we have a lot of ideas about planning a very water-sensitive project.
People enjoy being around water.
Absolutely.
And, and I think the project and what you're proposing, I, my concern, being on the Advisory Water Board, is that there's been a lot of saying, we're going to downscale the, our usage of water, and I'm just saying, you know, really, have you, have you checked with them to see that they don't object to what you're proposing to do?
I, I think those discussions will come, and I'll look forward to them, because I think we can prove out the way that we're using water on the site in a responsible way.
Okay. No, I have no objection to what you're proposing, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. Again, you know, I think we're all, we've been looking forward to this, Terry, not longer than anybody, looking forward to having this project built and that, because it's going to be a boon to the city, maybe not initially, but at least down the road, we know that. It's, it's the investment in the future for the city of La Quinta. I'm sure that some of us won't be around by the time this project is completed, but the good news is, we can say that we were part of having it developed and that. So all in all, thank you very much for everything that you've done and you've put into the, the future of our city and that.
Nice.
With that, I have one other thing. Let's touch on golf and resident play. Now that we have gotten to this point, one of the features that's in this agreement that people will see is the fact that Meriwether Green Group will be building a permanent clubhouse for the Arnold Palmer Golf Course. Well, one of the open-ended questions that we didn't satisfy in the agreement, and we're going to get into a discussion thereafter, is how does the city of La Quinta pay for that? Because there's been discussions of having the city purchase that clubhouse, because before, we were going to spend, I think it was $35 million?
Close.
To build a clubhouse, $40 million to build a clubhouse for two golf courses, but we can't do that anymore. So we're going to be, after November, starting a public discussion to talk about, okay, here are the rounds of golf that the residents play, and since day one, we have been adamant, and they have been accepting, about maintaining the current status of the number of residential cards that are out there, and the current status of the reservations sequencing that residents gain. So when we talk about that, that's 15,000 roughly, give or take, of 45,000 rounds of golf that go through the Palmer Course annually. We're then looking at that difference of the other 30,000 rounds, and how we can look at the rates to see what the market would absorb, as well as what we could get to not only fund the golf operations so we do more than break even, but also then pay for this clubhouse, because we've said in closed session that the general fund is not to pay for the cost of the clubhouse, it has to be assumed by the golf operations. We all know we have an election coming November 4th, and we'll have a couple of new members sitting on the city council. So it's our intent that after December, we will start having this discussion with the community and the council, starting in January, as to how do we make this golf situation work? Because we've heard loud and clear from the community that there's a concern out there about what are you going to do for our golf rounds? We've had a former city manager who went through this in Hapun Bay, who's been giving me non-stop emails about, you know, here's what you've got to do to make it happen. And so that being the case, come January, we will be in that discussion. That will be well in advance of this project being even breaking ground. This all assumes that come November 4th, this project would be approved by the city council. One of the reasons we haven't figured that out today is that, one, we've been devoting our time to all the agreements and the myriad of things that have gone into this purchase, sale, and development agreement, but second, I didn't want to spend the money on that analysis if we didn't have a project, because then we didn't need to do it. So if this moves forward, yes, we will have this discussion at that time.
And I think that total rounds of Silver Rock, 30%, just under 30%, are utilized by our residents with cards. So we've, we've got 30% to retain and 70% to make a lot more money. We can work on that, right? Yeah. Andy?
Okay.
I know you've got some thoughts, too.
Unless there's anything else, that will conclude the study session. All right, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks, you guys.
Okay, now we'll go back to our business session.
Okay, everybody that slept's a true believer. I don't know in what, but you're a true believer.
Okay, we'll take on business session number one, and that's approved first-round community services grants and funding requests. Staff report, Eddie, John?
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, today we bring to you the first round of community services grant and funding requests. This year's grant funding budget for this fiscal year is $60,000. We had 13 organizations apply for grant funding for a total of $67,700 in requests. The ad hoc committee, consisting of council members Evans and Franklin, are recommending eight of those organizations for funding for a total of $27,000 in funding. The ad hoc committee's first-round recommendations include the following organizations and funding amounts. The Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert for $2,500. CVS P I N, Inc., Doing Business as Patriot Ride for Our Heroes, $5,000. Desert Area Chapter Oncology Nursing Society for $500. Hidden Harvest for $5,000. International Classical Concerts of the Desert for $1,000. La Quinta Middle School, $5,000 for physical fitness programs and $5,000 for cultural events. Martha's Village and Kitchen, $2,500. Virginia Wearing International Piano Competition, $500. We do have a couple of the organizations in the audience this evening. If council should have any further questions, and I believe they'd like to speak before council, if given the opportunity as well. That concludes my staff report, unless council or the mayor should have any further questions.
Okay, questions to staff? Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your report, you talk about that this group, or the community service grant group will only look at this twice a year, I thought we used to do it quarterly?
No, we only, we've gone twice a year now, ever since the budget has been reduced. I'm sorry?
No.
Oh.
I apologize, you looked at me, I went right at that one.
He actually was asking.
I, I believe it's been the last couple of years, maybe three last fiscal years, that we have gone only bi- biannually due to the budget being reduced, so.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Any other questions of staff?
No.
Okay, I, I do have a request to speak. Dr. Joan Ribane, is it?
Actually, I believe she stepped out during the last study session, I apologize, I saw her leave.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions?
Sure, since I was one of the ad hoc members, I'd be happy to, to just make a couple comments on our, our process. We did take a little bit different approach with the request. One of the things that we always like to do is stick to the criteria, so some of the unfunded were because they either were funded previously and/or they didn't meet the criteria of being a nonprofit entity, and I will bring that item up at the end. But when we looked at these, we tried to cater them for La Quinta. For example, the Children's Discovery Museum, their request was to provide these annual memberships for La Quinta families so that parents and kids can go to the museum. And we felt that that was very beneficial, being that we're an arts and culture community, and we actually upped that from the request that they made, because we felt like more families and children could benefit from that. We also looked at items such as the Patriot Ride, which is the same group that does the Torta Palm Springs, that is starting to do a development out here, is a second year, and allocate that $5,000 specifically for, for marketing purposes, to help promote the La Quinta component of that bicycle ride. Last year, it was a specific request for police assistance on some of the traffic components. This year, we will have our name out there more prominently on some of the marketing. Same thing on the oncology nursing, we requested that in order to get funded, they're holding seminars within the city of La Quinta for those cancer and caregivers.
Wow, great.
For our, our residents who may need that service. So we tried to go back and say, that's great that you're asking for money, and we always want to help you out, but we've got to make sure that it's coming back to our community and benefiting. I did want to bring up the, the La Quinta Medical, Middle School. We separated that for a couple of reasons. We traditionally have awarded several organizations within the high schools, they, they come to us all the time, whether it's band or math, or, you know, debate club, or all the sports, and we kind of allocate those as requested. This was a unique situation that came to us mid-year, that this group kind of laid out their entire program, and, and we, when we looked at it, there are very specific components of the program, and we felt it was best to be more specific in our funding piece, just like we would do other programs in a high school. This is the first time middle school has requested anything. We explained that because of the breakdown of their budget and request, certain dollars should be allocated for the fitness side, and certain dollars should be allocated for the cultural side, and they do a phenomenal job. Martha's Village and Kitchen, they're actually redoing a pantry, so that will help the food insecurity component. Same with the Hidden Harvest, that is just a wonderful program where the produce is, is being utilized and going back to the families in need here. What am I missing? I would like to talk about the Sunline Transit Agency, and that's the $1,000 that Lauren came up and asked for, for the ride and roll. It's a, it's a concert on the bus, and they're going to every city to ask for funding of that. We suggested they go through the grant program, which they did, however, it's not a 501(c)(3) entity, so ad hoc committee would like to then present that as a potential, if it, we want to support that as a general line item expense, it would not come from the grant, it would come from other miscellaneous revenue sources.
The city manager's discretionary funds.
The city manager's budget, yes.
Called the reserving.
I couldn't resist that, Frank.
So what, you know, honestly, what we kind of found this time was there was just a big ask, and we tried to regroup some of the general asks, and again, we upped the budget for the reason of being able to give more, but wanted to make sure that it was really dedicated to benefit the residents here in La Quinta.
One question, if I could, regarding Hidden Harvest, are they going to bring that here to La Quinta? I mean, with this $5,000, like to our senior center and, and other things?
Yeah, they're, they harvest all the produce, and so, yes, that's going to, the churches that do pantries, the senior centers, the after-school programs, all of those things, is to continue the, the process of being able to help, Eddie, if you want to add to that, the gleaning, the gleaning process for.
They have two markets in La Quinta every month, and they already have their markets all planned out for this upcoming fiscal year, including La Quinta twice a month.
So.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Anyone else?
I'll just make a general comment, if I could, being as I don't approve of this program, I will not be voting for this item.
And I'm, I'm going to abstain on the Sunline thing. I, I really was not, not in favor of that. I, I concern myself, they're going to have live music and that on a bus and that, is that going to be a problem to the bus driver and to others, going to take away from his being able to drive that bus safely? So I, I was not a big proponent of, of doing this, so if we can just, if, if we're not going to approve that, then, that, like I say, I, I have a little bit of a problem with it.
Yeah, it's not included at all in our proposed motion for grant request.
If I can, I think they've done a great job here. I like what you guys have done with these groups. And with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the committee recommendations as stated.
Stop it.
Okay, all in favor, please vote. All in favor, please vote.
I like that.
Terry, you can vote, too.
Motion carries four to one.
Take mine out, he said I couldn't vote.
Congratulations. Thank you for all the good work you do.
We'll move on to the second business session, and that's interviews and appointments to the Historic Preservation and Housing Commission. I'm assuming that we'll do like we've done in the past, and that, so you want to give us the guidelines, please, Susan?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. We have two off-cycle vacancies, one on the Historic Preservation Commission and one longstanding vacancy on the Housing Commission. So we advertised for applications and we received multiple. So if you go to your ballot in the back of the staff report, we'll do it by ballot, but before we start, I'd like to say that Ms. Carlin, the first applicant, and Mr. Tompkins, the next-to-last applicant, have withdrawn. So we now will have, and I'm not sure who's left in the audience. How about if you just raise your hand so we know who's here? Okay, Dale Ortman, are you here, Dale? Chuck Phillips? Okay, Patricia Pyle? Okay, and Linda Williams? Okay.
How about Lynn Rogers?
Lynn Joy Rogers.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, in regarding to the Housing Commission, we have one vacancy and one applicant, and I think she's got a great resume here.
Make it simple.
So I'll make a motion to approve Lynn Joy Rogers to the Housing Commission.
Then move it in second.
We're not going to vote?
To approve on the Housing.
Lynn Joy Rogers.
Just there's only one applicant?
Absolutely.
Yep.
So we're not going to do anything by ballot?
Yeah, you're off the hook, you don't have to come up here and say anything.
So we're approving Lynn, Lynn who has been patient, waiting.
Sorry, we're going to let you know that ahead of time, you wouldn't have to come down.
I appreciate it.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Did you get mine?
Voting, voting this.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying, and good luck.
That's right.
Okay, we'll move on to.
Now, for the other applicants, what we'll do is call you up one at a time, and you can tell the council a little bit about your background, why you're interested. The council may have some questions for you, and then we'll go to the next applicant, after which the council will vote by ballot. I'll collect them, tally them, and announce the results. So the first applicant alphabetically, Dale Ortman, please, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Dale Ortman. I reside at 46542 Bradshaw Trail in La Quinta, and I'm a recent retired relocated person, and I chose to move to La Quinta. And I'm very, very happy I did that. I've been here three years. I enjoy the desert. I still do some work. I couldn't quite retire 100%, and I'm following up on some projects that I have had going on for a number of years. I enjoy golfing, mountain climbing, hiking, and I listened very attentively tonight to all of your questions at the council level regarding the recent flooding, and very interested in how your city engineer presented the facts. I thought he did an excellent job. I've done some flood control work in the past, in my previous occupation, and I know, excuse me, I know it's very difficult to explain to people how the hydrology and hydraulics work. I thought he did an excellent job, Mr. Johnson, and I think all of you had very, very good questions. And the one thing that's, that came up during that is you can't predict what Mother Nature has in store. And if you design for events like that, nobody could afford to build the structure to contain that. So this is a very unusual event, and I think that it's at no fault to previous engineers who worked and toiled to design the structures that you have in place now. But I think the answers are to do the best you can with the budget you have, design for the hundred-year storms, which is the norm, and have a very, very good maintenance program to maintain the structures that you do build. I think that's extremely important, and I wanted to just let you know about that. I'm excited to be able to apply for this position. I know it's a non-paying position, that doesn't bother me. I'd like to contribute to this, to the city more than the golf balls I left in the 17th lake on Silver Rock. And I commend you for the work you've done on that, and I listened very attentively tonight. I think you have chosen well, and I look forward to how that project is constructed and works out in the future. And I'd like your consideration for me to serve on this board. I've been an architect for 30 years, designed a number of buildings, been involved in the planning stages as well as construction, and I think I could do a very good job to help guide and give direction to your planning commission and to you also. So I'd appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dale. I'll ask members of the council if they want to ask you any questions. And after, Christine, Lee?
No.
No, thank you.
Your experience is terrific, and your background is thinking planning commission. It's working out well. We're just coming down the pipe.
I've been up in front of many planning commissions, probably in the thousands, so I appreciate what you do and the effort that you put forward. I think you're very, very, very professional, very good council.
I see you were out in my old neighborhood in that, I lived up in North Ranch and Westlake Village, and I see you've done work up in that area.
Designed many homes in North Ranch, and also worked on the golf course.
Did you belong to North Ranch?
Yes, I did.
So did I.
And all of the streets and infrastructure for that, our company did most of that, so.
Is there still just 27 holes?
Yes, yes, sir.
So they have increased it to another nine holes?
No, no, they haven't. But it's a wonderful course.
It's a beautiful area. We loved it, but it was growing so much and developing so much that we were looking for more of a rural atmosphere than what was happening there, because it just exploded.
Yes, we also did Lake Sherwood, which is a more popular course with people because of the television and the exposure we have with Tiger Woods. But, yeah, it's a wonderful area, and I'm sorry, I never got to play golf with you, but.
Good. Okay, thank you, Dale.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ortman. You may be happy to hear, by the way, that commissioners do get paid $75 per minute.
Speaking of.
That's a couple rounds of golf in the right time of year in Silver Rock.
There you go. I'm wondering if Chuck Phillips has come in? No, okay.
Good evening, I won't be long. I guess I have three minutes, is that correct?
No, no, there's no time limit.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm Patricia Pyle, I live at 50255 Via Sempatico in La Quinta. I've lived in La Quinta for nine years, and I have benefited greatly from being here. My husband, Bob Pyle, who you knew, and you did too, Terry, was very active in the community and as well as the whole Coachella Valley, and I just feel it's time for me to give back even more than I have been doing in the past, and specifically to my city. And you happen to be in having a position open and something that I have a very keen interest in, and that's housing. I've been involved in housing in many, many different ways for about 20 years plus. I worked at the Federal Energy, Federal Department of Housing for, in Washington, D.C., for a total of eight years.
Mrs. Pyle, can I interrupt you? The application we have for tonight is the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, then, I'm going, I'm doing the housing, so that's, I was looking at that. I do not have the preservation background, so I guess I'll withdraw mine.
I was going to say, you should apply for the housing. I thought you had a great resume for that.
I thought that was for if you were at a certain level.
That's right. The seat that we had open required a tenant and required a certain age, yeah.
Right, and affordable housing, I thought.
Which I understand you didn't, you didn't qualify for that.
Right, absolutely, did not, so that's why I didn't apply, so. But I thought there was another one as well, so, okay, well, I'm sorry to take your time, and great to see everybody. And I really enjoyed the council meeting, by the way, very, very much.
Thank you.
But it's obvious you want to get involved, and that's good, and that's what we want.
Yeah, I do, and I'll keep looking, so, okay. Okay, great, thanks.
Please, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Pyle. Next, we have Linda Williams.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. I'm Linda Williams, I reside at 52519 Avenue de Juarez here in La Quinta. I've lived in La Quinta for 11 years, and I've worked in real estate while here. But the one thing I want to talk about is my time on the La Quinta Historical Society. I've been on that board for the past seven to eight years, I've been president for the past six years. And during my tenure, I've been before you many times to partner with the city on projects that actually highlight our history, promote our history, and with an eye toward preservation of the history. Also during my tenure, we have worked on a relationship with La Quinta Resort, encouraging them to embrace their history, which they have done. We see it as not only good for preservation, but also a marketing tool for them. And I'm happy to say that we now have a liaison with our board from the management. We now enjoy a very good relationship with the management, and they are looking at preserving some of the buildings on their property. I also, during this time, invited the president of the Historic Preservation Commission to come and speak to our group, because I feel we have shared interests and we have similar, a similar mission. And, and he did, it was Bob Wright, and he did come and speak, and I was invited to speak at their group, which I've done a few times, and I will be speaking to them again on October 16th, because I really, I really think we can work together, and that was the reason that I applied. I feel like it's a natural fit for me. I've worked really hard on getting the community involved in recognizing how much history we have here in La Quinta, and, as I said, with an eye toward preserving that history, because I think it's very special. I would really look forward to being chosen to serve on this commission, and it would be a privilege to do that. Thank you.
Got to warn you.
Excuse me?
Got to warn you.
Oh.
I was on, I was on the Stark Preservation, or Stark Historical Society Board for three years, then I went on the Stark Preservation.
So you've been down this road.
So you better be careful.
I know, I keep thinking, yeah, it seems like a natural thing.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, Linda. Linda, you want to, any questions? Terry?
No, I don't have any questions.
Please.
No, look forward to it, thank you.
Christine? Okay. Linda, just a quick, quick question.
Yes.
How did the function go Friday night?
It was lovely. I understand you were, you had your golf tournament, so.
Well, we had the mayor's cup, and I couldn't be there, unfortunately, and Linda was there too, so we were tied up.
We must have, yes, 75 to 80 people.
Yeah.
Yeah, 75 to 80 people, and it was.
We have good attendance?
We had good attendance, and the nice thing was a lot of people came into the museum and actually looked at the exhibits. You know, sometimes people just come for the music, but they came into the museum and looked, you know, at the exhibits also. So we had, we had a good turnout and a good response. Looking forward to the next one, November. We have a jazz group coming in November, so keep it in mind.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Say hello to Phil for us.
I will.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So now the council will cast their votes, and I will collect them.
Making sure we follow the right lead. I think I did that right.
I told her only one.
We pulled the dairy.
Okay, now I will announce the votes. We have Mayor Adolf voted for Ms. Williams, Councilwoman Evans voted for Ms. Women, Williams, Councilmember Franklin voted for Mr. Ortman, Councilmember Henderson voted for Ms. Williams, and Councilmember Osborne voted for Ms. Williams. So now the council can make a motion if they would like.
Motion.
Move approval to appoint Linda Williams to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Moved in second. Please vote.
Councilmember Osborne and Franklin, it didn't take, thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Dale, very much, and that, please, keep us in mind.
Yes, thank you, I think you made a wise decision. Congratulations.
We may have plans for you later.
Yeah.
You're on our back, Mark.
And congratulations, Linda.
You have a good engineer here.
Yeah, look at his head, look at his head, it's just kind of getting bigger.
All right, next item on the agenda for business, item is appoint a member of the Desert Classic Charities, Charities Evaluation Committee. I think everybody has served on that, maybe except for Lee.
And my challenge is that Desert Classic Charities is a client of mine, and though, you know, this represents nonprofits and everything, I just wouldn't want anybody to question what we're doing and how we're doing it. So I want to recuse myself at this time from being hesitant.
If you don't mind, I would like to just hold this until after we have our new council members, yep.
After the election?
Sure. I think that's a great idea.
I think so.
Table. Do they need to do that? Okay.
We're happy to do that, we'll notify the Desert Classic that you will have an appointment, though.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
And did they say when they were going to make the announcements in regards to the funding?
They never did, last year.
They didn't say when they would make the announcements, they thought that they would have the applications available for around the first of December. So that's all we really know at this point.
Maybe the second in November or something.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the city manager and I were just talking, and light of it's being tabled, it may be beneficial to mention that it be continued to the December 2nd meeting, so that at that time when the new council members are seated, it can still be brought right back, and it'll be on the agenda.
Do you want a motion to that effect?
Might as well.
Amended to the second.
I move that we table.
Continue.
Continue, I'm sorry. Continue this until the December 2nd meeting, when new council members will be on board.
I second that motion.
Okay. But a motion in a second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Christie, if you tabled it, then somewhere along the line, there had to have been a motion to take it off the table.
Right.
And then a motion to put it on the agenda.
Got it, okay.
Okay, the next business item is the approval of appropriation for the YMCA facility improvements. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item is to approve an appropriation of Quimby and Equipment Replacement Funds for improvements of the YMCA facility. The YMCA facility was built in 1991 and is a La Quinta facility that is leased to the YMCA. It's, as you know, located next to the Boys and Girls Club, close to Truman Elementary and La Quinta Middle School. Currently, the facility serves about a hundred children a day for childcare and preschool activities. And recently, we were touring the facility, getting ready for ADA improvements. The city has been doing ongoing ADA improvements to all of our facilities, and the time came to assess the YMCA facility. And during our assessment of that facility, we found some items that we would like to do in conjunction with the ADA improvements, things like improving the landscape, improving the HVAC system, doing some painting, and improving the lighting of the facility. So we figured this would be a good time to bring it to council to ask for this, for this funding that is available to make these improvements to this facility, and tie it in with the ADA improvements, so it can all be taken care of at the same time.
Any questions of staff?
No, I have, I do have a question. Destiny Church is using the facility once a month, is that correct? Are they still?
No.
They're using the Boys and Girls-
Their Boys and Girls Club. Okay, were they looking to make some improvements there?
They have talked to the Boys and Girls Club about the potential to make some improvements there, but I don't know that they've actually done it.
Have done, okay, have done, okay.
That was part of their agreement to end up being helpful there. That's not been initiated yet.
Okay. No, I support those.
I can, just to save us, I think this is a great idea. I mean, we put some real improvements in the Boys and Girls Club, and I think we need to do this to the YMCA also, so I'm a hundred percent for it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to number five, and that's the consent calendar. Linda?
Yes, item number sixteen. This is the, oh, that thought, Henson Consulting Agreement that's being proposed, and in review, I pulled this because it is a five-year agreement that doesn't have a specific dollar amount, it's a $175 an hour, random agreement with no cap or not to exceed. So I would, I appreciate the services, I think that the next step in our phase of transformation is absolutely necessary, but I would like to propose that it moves to a three-year term, so we can assess the projects as needed, and then approve a not-to-exceed cap for $50,000 for the rest of this fiscal year, and then we can budget it accordingly, starting next July.
If I can, so you're saying a limit of $50,000 for this 14, 15 budget year?
Yes. So we at least have a cap on what the proposed projects are, still at the same hourly rate, and then it'll still be a three-year agreement. We would need to then budget something for next year, based on what the scope of the project is and what work still needs to be accomplished.
And I, I can't, I don't have a problem with that, I think that's a great idea, what you brought up. The aspect of redesigning business processes to enhance service levels, to a high-performing, customer-oriented culture, all those sound really cool.
It is really cool.
I wish I would have wrote them down, though. But what's it mean, what's it deliverables, what's the specific items, you know, that's going to be brought, I think she does a good job, but I think these really sound cool, but what's it really mean?
Too much wordsmithing for me. Well, you need to become a high-reliability organization.
Higher liability.
High reliability, an HRO, or part of Six Sigma Plan.
Reliability.
No, reliability.
And I guess that question's for the city manager.
Yes. So basically, what we're looking at is not to have her design it, but instead to advise us, and particularly our human resources effort, on how to design that and take our staff through it. What we basically mean is, if you listen to a lot of conversations that take place, we talk in bureaucratic speak. We have situations where we will talk about what we're going to do, but we get into, we possibly will finish it at this point in time, and we'll give you a date between now and then. And in the next level of customer relations, we need to be talking as a staff and as an organization of, here's what we're going to do and how we're going to get it done. And if we can't get it done, then we need to be honest with ourselves internally and with our customers externally, to say, here are the parameters of what is needed and how we're going to get there. So part of what we're looking at, council member, is moving our culture from one of being timid, to one of being, we're in charge of what we're doing and we can get it done, or if we can't, how we be honest with ourselves and our constituents as to why we can't get it done, or within whatever the timeframes are. Another thing that we're going to be doing here shortly is videotaping each of our department directors and myself, and giving mock presentations, and looking at how we can up-level our skill sets in what we present to you here, to the public, and forums and the rest, so we can move ourselves to the next level of walking the talk of customer service, not from a timid standpoint, but walking the talk from, we're comfortable in who we are, we're comfortable in what we're presenting, and comfortable then in what we're delivering. Another point of Six Sigma, and that came out of a conversation I have with Councilmember Evans, of something they went through at JFK, is that we look at the aspect of what we do and say, okay, for those things that we do on a frequent, almost perfunctory basis, like processing invoices, like processing the agendas, like processing bills and paying bills or payroll and things of that nature, let's get that to a point where we're doing an 80% effort, meaning that it is working, and we don't have to be looking at it individually like, oh my God, I gotta do payroll this week.
It's hardwired and automated.
So that way, when we get new things coming in of the unexpected, like dealing with the flood work, Tim can be in a position to say, yeah, I can take this on and get this done in this timeframe, because these other things that I'm in charge of are working, and I don't have to spend my time worrying about whether or not this thing is getting processed through the system. So those are the type of things that we want to undertake, and we have an internal working group set up that Gil and Community Services is heading up. We are now appointing people to work on a project action team to work on customer service. And as we move into the customer service center, certainly there's the fact that we have the system set up, that now we can track things on an automated basis versus on a pass-the-paper-through-the-inbox basis. We can now take that to the next level of having people together, so we're not moving people around and they're working together as a cohesive group. And now we're going to start working on, when you go to the counter, how do you deal with that 5% of the population that comes in and nothing you can do to satisfy them? So let's give staff the tools, how do you deal with those folks, and how we make sure that staff doesn't get taken down by it when you have people yelling at you and trying to figure out how to deal with them, but keep your backbone up? And then how do we deal with the aspect of then, we're now walking the talk? Because as I've stated before, we're changing the culture here in this organization, and if we're going to be a high-performing organization, our culture now has to be natural to people that, yeah, we can take this on, because this is who we are. So that's part of what we're looking at. I know it's more into a touchy-feely realm than it is to say quantifiable, but I dare say if you come in the City Hall today and look at the attitude of staff versus the attitude of staff two years ago, there's a marked difference. And what we now want to do is take that now to the next level.
Well, this, and I think this is good, I, you know, we, we at this council have never been one to micromanage our city manager or your team, and I don't see us beginning that by any stretch, but I would just ask from a customer-oriented culture aspect, that when developers or folks come into our counter and want to make changes, and their current code says, no, you can't make that change, we don't just say no and turn around and walk away, but we help them, give them other, other alternatives to get what they need to be done, but within the realm that we can. And that our team looks at those old rules or old ordinances that we have set years ago, and see that they're still relevant today. And so I hope that comes out of this as well. I mean, besides the touchy-feely stuff, you know, that's, you guys, that's your call, but-
Set that initiative separately, total regulation overhaul.
Yeah, yeah, that's something we need to look at, but just to, again, the customer-oriented service, that we help that developer or that building owner, whoever they may be, to help get them what they need within the ordinances given, but also be mindful of that ordinance in the sense of, do we still need it?
Well, and to that end, the storm is brewing, not a rainstorm, and it's going to be starting to hit your desk starting in January, because Susan's working with the department directors to go through all of our municipal code, to come up with how we can clarify, simplify, and make things easier. And one of the first things that will be queued up is our purchasing and finance function. The second thing we're starting to look at, and working with Les and Tim on this as a result of the Old Town Expansion Development, and that brought forth the piece, it'll be before you on October 17th, of here's the scope of what we would recommend we look at in the village to put in place a process where we can entitle everything, if you will, so new development that comes in won't have to go through a lengthy environmental process, a lengthy analysis process, and a lengthy whatever process that we have to go to.
Right.
And then the third aspect is to start looking at our development codes, and that one's going to be very interesting, because a lot of that was built upon the fact that situations occurred in the past that created the need by previous councils to say, we need to regulate that. And so we're going to need to look at, do we still need to regulate that, or can we get rid of those regulations?
The whole time I've been on the council, I've never heard anybody say, we need to regulate something.
Well, maybe it was a different way. But, so, yes, that, now we're in year three of this journey we started on in 2012, and what we're finding is that if we do want to make the process simpler, if we do want to make the process more efficient, we're now running up against, well, we got to do these things because that's what we've set in place, because our codes require. And so we're going to be coming back and saying, do we really need to have five of these things submitted, or do we really need to be enforcing certain aspects, so we can free time up to focus then on what's more important?
Do you feel encumbered by a $50,000 cap and a three-year contract?
Well, what I heard, the direction would be at $50,000 for this fiscal year.
Okay.
One of the things-
Yep, okay.
-that we're looking at in doing our budget, is when we got into the budget discussion and people were asking, well, how much do we spend on advertising, and how much do we spend on consultants, and how much do we spend on other services, and that's divided up into five different budgets. So what we were starting on, until we went through a change in finance director, we didn't have the time to bring someone on board and say, okay, now you have to do this, plus come up with a whole new budget format, is to get to a point of saying, in our 15, 16 budget, that we would say, here's all the consultants the city uses, here's all we're spending on marketing, here's all we spend on these various pieces. So when you open the budget and you ask the question, first, we're not running around going, what page is it on, and then second, we could turn to the community and say, the city of La Quinta spends X on consultants, and this is Y. So part of what I'm seeing, and Rita and I started talking about this today, is for something like this, we'll say, next fiscal year, for an agreement like Henson Consulting, here's what we're recommending you consider as an investment in that. Why? Because we've been in situations where we start out with a contract that says, here's the limit of the dollar amount in the contract. Well, then, it grows. The Tall Man Group contract, for example, was a situation where we had Silver Rock work, and we had the property management plan. Then we started going down this long journey with DOF on the project management plan, and we started to have, do more things. Well, we ran up against the limit of the contract, and it's like, well, how do we amend it? Well, there's one path to say, well, the city manager has a signing authority, and so I could just do an amendment to the contract, but someone will find out about that, and that will not be a good way to go. So then we have to go through a contract amendment. So if we go through a contract amendment, then we have to send it through the whole system, that includes legal, that includes insurance, that includes staff time, it includes putting it on agenda, and what is that costing us as a city? We want transparency, but is that really an efficient way to gain transparency versus saying, here's the budget, and it's easier to do a, admit your, say, let's adjust this budget for these reasons, and if you agree, great, it happens, and then we continue with the service, and if you don't agree, it doesn't happen, and then we do something else. So that's part of what we're looking at.
Well, I get what you're saying, but, so, you're talking about $50,000 for this budget year?
For the rest of this, two now, between June?
Between now and June.
Maximum, between now, June.
Right, okay, so we're not going to talk about a contract, time, years, whatever, right?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we lose the scope of building the budget.
All right. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right.
Frank, with the contract, we have the right to cancel that contract at any time?
Yes, all of our contracts have a thirty-day notice.
So, so basically, what difference does it make? Three years, five years? I mean, you're working on maybe a month, a month, as things go well, fine. So, to me, it doesn't matter, three or five years.
But it comes back as-
Right.
Okay. Well, with that, then I'll make a motion, then that we approve this item for a limit of $50,000 for the 14, 15 budget period for a contract of up to three-year term.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be leaving now, and I didn't have any committees.
Okay.
And I don't necessarily want to hear your reports.
Fascinating stuff about I-
Something like this is going to save us a boatload of time if she's not doing hers.
Exactly.
She's always got her phone. Thank you, Terry.
I don't think we should excuse her.
Okay.
Please note for the record, Miss Henderson failed out early, and she's still cold.
All right, let's move on to reports and informational items. Linda?
I have nothing to report this meeting.
Okay. Kristi?
Uh-uh.
Lee?
One moment, I'll make it really quick. Imperial Irrigation District is looking to increase their rates, as we knew would be coming, they're looking, everyone got something in their last bill that talked about proposed rates. Those rates aren't going to be moved by the board until December, I believe. In November's ECAC board meeting, I'll have more information for you, but it is the case, as we found with our permits, that we hadn't looked at the cost of our permits for many, many years. They had not looked at the cost of operations from the Power Department for too long. So the aspect of per kilowatt is going, the consultant gave IID the report that $3.60 per kilowatt should be $19.60 per kilowatt. So they are looking to raise it from $3.60 to $9. And, and then they're only saying it's going to be an 8% increase for the year. So I'm really short on information at this point in time. They're going to bring it back to the ECAC in our November meeting, and that, I'll have more information for you at that time.
Does the math work on that?
No, it doesn't. The math does not work by any stretch.
All right.
But-
Doesn't work for me.
And then also, the programs for free power, they're giving now $5 million away for free power, and- for free power, and just want to make sure that's available to all of our citizens, and we have a contact here in town. Thank you. That's all I have.
We had a SEVAG meeting, and two items of interest that came up is they've put together a model ordinances for driving under the influence, and they will be putting that together and be sending it out to the cities for taking a look at it to see DUIs in that.
We need a new ordinance.
Why do they need an ordinance?
Well, they feel that they need a new ordinance, so we'll get a chance to look at it when it comes through.
It's up to the sheriff.
Yeah. And the other thing was, we did appoint a new representative to SCAG, and that would be Luffy Ramos.
Oh, Luffy did?
And that, she wanted it, so that was fine. Sunline, wasn't a whole lot going on with Sunline, but they did recommend approval on bus stops, certain bus stops and that. And we have six that are going to be revamped or modernized here in the city of La Quinta. I gave staff a copy so that they know which ones they'll be looking at for the improvements. Okay? That was it. With that, we'll move on to department reports. City manager?
Nothing more than what's in the report.
Okay. City clerk?
Nothing visible.
City attorney?
Real quickly, Mayor and members of the council, I just wanted to report, in case you had not heard, that the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, federal court, has ruled that certain streets are subject to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And everybody's kind of wondering what this all means. There has, from what I understand, there is a petition to have the entire Ninth Circuit, not just the panel of three judges, rehear the case. But I don't know if the Ninth Circuit will accept that request. It is possible it could be appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court as well, but I just wanted to put the council on notice that that is out there. And once the decision on that is final, we will follow up with a memo and a debriefing. I just wanted to make sure that.
So if Terry was here, she would have made a comment on this.
Well, if they ever come on the ballot, I will vote for it.
Right.
With that, we don't have any other business items to deal with, so I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion passes for, with Councilwoman Henderson absent. With that, we're adjourned.